All right, good evening and welcome to the Monday, December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four meeting of Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We've just been in a paperwork session, those of us who weren't here on the last minute, and we'd like to start this meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intuitively, Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got some people tonight. Must be important stuff.
Let's see. Police, highway, school, Darrell Pauling.
Stop sign.
Stop sign.
Yep, stop sign.
All right. Up first, we have the review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of one million forty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents, and one for December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of forty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents. We have a payroll manifest for December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. We don't have it for the twenty-sixth.
No, it should be on there, sixty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
Oh, it's up in the portal? Yeah. Sixty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Sorry, I was going by the cheat sheet. We have the November treasurer's reconciliation. We have purchase order from Motorola Solutions for twenty thousand two hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents for police radios as approved during the budget review. We have the November town clerk reconciliation, the November tax collector reconciliation. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove or discuss?
The purchase order, if we don't mind.
Yep.
Only because it's my request and I want to just talk about it outside of it.
Sure. You're on the floor.
I'm just removing it, that's all I'm requesting, and then we can talk about it after.
Oh, you're removing it?
Removing from the consent so we can talk about it as an item.
A motion from Mr. Bruno to rule the Motorola radios.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Gannon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Motion carries five zero zero. Other than that, we'll have to take the motion for approval.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as reviewed.
Amended.
Being amended.
Okay. Good. Motion from Mr. Gannon.
Second.
Second from Mr. Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries five zero zero. Any requests for additional items or other business? During that, public input will occur no earlier than six forty-five PM. So why don't we jump into your Motorola radios?
Yeah, so just as a background, so during the budget review, like, was noted by our town administrator, the board approved twenty thousand dollars removed from my budget to come from any years remaining. We've got that quote now, we have it, it comes up with twenty-two dollars more than we originally planned for. Kim has reviewed it, has agreed it's okay, and I just didn't, you know, obviously I can't approve it being that it's my PO, so that's the background.
Just two dollars over?
It's two hundred and two dollars over.
Two hundred and two dollars, okay. Two hundred and two dollars more than?
Than we originally planned, yeah.
So it's actually four hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and four dollars?
Nope, no, that's the right number, twenty thousand two hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents. Originally it was twenty thousand dollars was the estimate.
Yes, okay, all right. Do you have any questions about that? We should vote to reapprove that then.
I make a motion to approve, or reapprove, the purchase of the Motorola Solutions police radios for twenty thousand two hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Gannon, a second from Ms. Queen, any discussion? Queen, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries five zero zero. No, abstain, oh, sorry.
Four zero one.
Four zero one. Up next, approval of the minutes for December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Ready to get a chance to read them? Any amendments or adjustments or anything?
I have just one minor page. It is actually correct, just uppercase something. Page nine. Selectmen report. Will you approve the town's priorities if you just uppercase "town"? Because you have uppercase "school board," I just want to make sure they're separate entities. So just uppercase the word "town." Well, it's a quick read if you don't. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December ninth, two thousand twenty-four as amended by Ms. Queen.
Seconded.
A motion from Mr. Gannon, second from Mr. Lynch. All those in favor say aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carries five zero zero. All right, we have the approval and release of the May eighth, two thousand twenty-three non-public minutes, Litchfield Fire Chief. Motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve and release the May eighth, two thousand twenty-three non-public minutes when we discuss hiring the Litchfield Fire Chief.
Motion from Mr. Gannon?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Queen? Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries five zero zero.
I don't think it was Selectmen.
Oh, no, you have to abstain because you weren't on.
I'm only approving the release of the non-public minutes.
Oh, that's right, he can do that. Yeah, because he is a board member. Motion carries five zero zero.
Because I was back in May.
Okay, good catch.
I didn't see his hand go up.
Oh, I said aye, I thought.
He did, yep, he did. And he can do that because he is a member now.
I did note, though, the contracts that are signed there, no one signed the contracts other than the chief. I don't know if there's a requirement to sign it in the, it's in the bundle or in the net?
Should be, okay. We'll take a look at that. All right. Up next, let's go to public input first, because we have some other things that might take some time here. Are there any members of the public that'd like to come forward and speak?
I should go with Aiden Jack.
You already have one. Mine are always working.
Actually, what happened for my work, I have one.
Yep. I was gonna say, Ron, as suggested, there's several seats open, you can get your name tag if you want to run.
Yeah, yeah. You make that happen, you know.
I will contemplate that, thank you, John. I'm gonna talk about the police station, and before I say anything, I want to preface my comments by saying I've gone through the police station, it needs some attention, there needs to be something done there. So my comments are not that I'm against doing anything there, I just think my comments are, is I don't believe we're in a position to move forward with the full Warren article as it currently stands.
Okay.
And the reason for that is a couple of things, is if you take a step back, it was my impression that when we did the fire station, we pulled out the police station because of a bunch of considerations, for lack of a better term. My assumption was, is that the fire station and the police station were all designed as a single unit. Well, apparently that's not the case. So all that got designed, if I'm, unless somebody wants to correct me, was the fire station. So the police station hasn't had any level of specific design yet, and what we have done is apparently had interactions with another architectural firm different from the one that designed the fire station. And so essentially, in fact, that firm is not under contract formally with the town, as I understand it. So we really have not gotten to the point where we have any really, we don't have an engineering firm on board, we don't have any specific engineering efforts done, and for us to put forth a final project with a specific price tag on it is wildly ahead of the game. In fact, I'm gonna read what I read at the Budget Committee meeting the other night, and as I said there, while what I'm gonna read to you is from the Department of Education, it is their statement regarding how planning should go forward in the process of putting together a project for town consideration. And if you will indulge me, let me just read that. And it's titled "Funding the Planning Process." "In a world of shrinking resources and growing demands for public accountability, getting the necessary funding for a facility's planning process can be extremely difficult. While much can be done by volunteers, at some point there will be a need to pay for the necessary professional technical services to analyze existing buildings, to prepare preliminary programming and design studies, to conduct environmental geotechnical investigations of possible building sites, to develop accurate cost estimates for the alternative under consideration. Many districts are understandably reluctant to commit funds prior to a bond vote. But presenting a proposal to the voters without adequate study and accurate cost estimates can be a formula for disaster. Conceptual drawings and a rough cost estimate are not sufficient. It is unwise and very risky to promise the public that a building can be constructed on a particular site for a given cost, without having conducted geotechnical site investigations and using only gross estimating techniques for the construction cost. When projects are proposed without adequate planning, the result would be a significant cost overruns or major reductions in the scope of the project to fit within the budget. Worse, without adequate researching and analyzing all feasible alternatives, the district cannot be assured that the proposed project is the best solution. Possible sources of funding include direct appropriations specifically for planning and design work, funds from a capital reserve account, and funds from impact fees. Many districts appropriate planning and design funds in one year with the expectation that a project will be proposed in the following year. Sufficient funding should be provided to thoroughly analyze alternatives, to conduct geotechnical investigations, environmental studies, or proposed building sites, and to complete at least fifty percent of the design work for any proposed construction." And since we don't, we don't have an engineer on board, we don't have any official design. Essentially, the difficult, and the other thing is, there's been talk about alternatives have been analyzed, I haven't seen any, I've asked for them, I don't know if you've ever seen any, but clearly within what's been done here, there hasn't been any alternatives. One of the ones that I would like to see, or have seen analyzed, as a forensist is giving the police station this entire building and building new town hall. I think that's a viable potential alternative. Does it give the ten thousand square feet that the proposed police station? No, but I think there's elements in there that can certainly cover that at a much lower cost. Other questions that remain is in the new facility, it's designed for full-time dispatching. I don't know if the Board of Selectmen's ever considered that, but the need for full-time dispatching requires two full-time twenty-four-seven employees. An incredibly large extension of employees. Now, I know if we're ever planning to do that, if it was me, I think we need the full-time ambulance service, would we consider that? But even, you know, John, you know that the expense of that is a great, great expense. And this full-time dispatching calls for me in that same sort of category. And the other element of this is, the estimates I've seen are, don't encompass things like owner's project representative. That's our person that's supposed to take care of this and avoid surprises. There's no contingency. There is contingency in the estimate I saw for the construction manager, that's on the contractor's side. I haven't seen any contingency in this, which should be at least twenty percent. So there's a whole bunch of things in here that are non-included, the chief may have addressed some of these since then, but by the fact that we don't have an engineer on board, I can't fathom that this is the appropriate thing to do at this point. My recommendation for you is to keep this moving, is to change the Warren article, to go out and hire an engineering firm, to investigate properly what to do with it, alternatives, and actually complete a design to the fifth percent level that you can then get accurate cost estimates. So that's my recommendation, and I appreciate the time.
If I could correct something, if I, well, can I just add something to Ron's statement?
Sure.
So I was here during a lot of the discussion around the municipal building, which included the police station and fire station, and was part of the decision, part of the folks that made the decision to split it. The original plans that we were presented as part of the full scope project was a combined building. That was always the intent, it was split off because of cost. It was also that the fire department at the time was at an urgent need where we couldn't risk a failure, we're not addressing the immediate need that we had. We had trucks that were failing, we couldn't purchase trucks to put them back in that station, we had to get a station that could accommodate a modern truck, stuff like that. Never mind the people, space, and all that. The building was always, was always meant to be the L. That's what the site level lines all look like, if you see all those plans, the floor plans were all done. You may be correct that that second half of the building wasn't fully designed, but the layout, the site work was done to accommodate that, and that site work was completed during the fire station build-out. There was a lot of things we reduced from the fire station to get to a number that the public would accept. The police station, I thought, was in the north, way north of what we originally had as part of the original program, the project.
What's that again?
I think the number, I think now the number's around six million dollars for the police station half. I think before, I remember seeing numbers of nine and greater, just for the police side of the building. So that's been gone through a couple of things. The money that was enabled by the board last year to the department to go back and refresh those floor plans, refresh it, get the build ads, or at least the estimates that we can go to bond, was authorized, that was what, twenty, eighteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, to refresh the work that was already done initially, back many years ago and get it up to date. You're probably right, it's probably not a full build set, but that was to get us to a cost, right, kind of the best estimate or worst case. With respect to the dispatch area, I just want to address that, it was never the concept for it to be full-time, full-time. The issue we have is the current dispatch center today, one, there's no room for the equipment that supports it, it's all stuffed in a closet, if you went in the closet, you can't walk in it, right, that's an aside. We've had many events in this town where we've required to have two or three people in that small little space answering phones, dealing with radio communications. The idea was to get a space large enough to allow us to grow into a two-position or two people to be in that room to work effectively. During an event, if you think about the bomb threats that occurred at the school back a few years back, this place was crawling with people trying to help, and there was no place for them to work. So we need to modernize that center, that's what that's about. Will it ever get to a full-time? That's not my call, I'll probably be long retired and on my way to someplace else, right? But to put a building, when you make that investment, you want to make sure at least you can do two. Most dispatch centers that are full-time have four. So it was never designed to be a full-time dispatch center. Would we like to be able to take over our fire dispatch and all coordinated? Probably, it's a long-term goal, but I don't think that's a, that's not a short-term goal by any stretch of imagination. Do I think the plans are a hundred percent to your point? Probably not, right, from a plan respect, that's what the next funding, that's typically what happened last time. In two thousand seventeen, we went to the voters asking for the engineering dollars, they gave it to us.
What's that?
Two thousand seventeen, that's when we went to the voters and said, we want to build a police station, fire station, we need the engineering dollars, it was sixty-six thousand dollars, I believe, was authorized by the residents at the time. That's when they came back, two thousand eighteen, when we started. When we first initially presented the bond, we got a lot of, lot of feedback on the cost. We went back as a group with, I think Kerry Douglas was on it, myself, Schaefer was on it, and then the fire chief and a bunch of other folks, went back to the architects, and we started looking, okay, what are the dire needs, what do we have to have, and what can we take off? We took off a whole garage, we eliminated the back of the building, we shortened up all the offices, which now, in retrospect, eh, we're missing probably one or two offices we need, or space, we have no storage in that building for material, things like chairs. It's crazy, right? If you've been in the room, this chair's stuffed in that room, you can't even get in there, and stuff like that.
Which room are you talking about now?
The community room.
Oh, the community room.
Yeah. So if you look at that closet, this chair's stacked up in there because there's no real storage for all the accessory stuff, right, those things. The back doors were taken off the building, right, there were no pull-throughs, it was originally designed to be pulled through, it wasn't because of, the money that was put in initially in the site work, we were able to save, we were able to reinvest it back in the building and keep the dollars the same, right, so those, you know, kinds of people around in our neighborhood. So I mean, I appreciate it, but I think, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree, we've got to make sure we have the right funding in the amount we're asking for, but we're gonna be up against other expenses, and we've been kicking this tire since this building was built. And the idea, and you asked about other options, those studies were done by MRI, there were other agents that came in and did reviews, and they all determined that the best path forward was to build the police station on top, you know, the guy, the combined building. And I don't know what it would cost to rehab this building, obviously, and I still don't think it fits the needs of the police station. And then what do you do with the town hall? You build another one for two, two million, three million?
That's a lot less than six.
I get it, but you gotta probably put two million dollars in this building just to rehab it for a police station.
You don't know the answer till you look at it.
True, but those, that assessment was done back then, and I'm surprised Kim hasn't delivered it to you yet, I thought, I thought we found that detail, so if we haven't.
The only thing I saw was, there was a police evaluation that was referenced in the CIP.
Yeah.
What was that, nineteen eighty-one or something like that?
Probably.
Something like that.
And I think MRI came in too.
MR, yeah, MRI, but that's, that's the only thing I've seen in that.
Yeah, the police department's been dealing with this space issue and the ability to function since the building was opened.
I won't disagree with that.
And that's, you know, a shame, and the department's grown, what, three times larger than it was before?
And I am not arguing something needs to be done, I'm just saying that I believe the Board of Selectmen have failed to oversee this so that it's ready to go forward. It's not being adequately studied and prepared. And, and John, I understand many of what things you're saying, but I don't want another LMS.
And that's what's, that's what's really bothering me, is that the town, the fire station, the fire station being the latest, the last example, is always kept within the budget they've given. And it's a shame that the town's being dragged down by the mistakes of an administration at the school side. This town is very, the town leadership and the employees of this town are always as transparent as we can. There's a desire, there's a need, and the town has been struggling with trying to do this and not hurt the public, but we also know the school has a whole bunch of needs too. I mean, I saw it, what, twelve million dollars in just maintenance costs they gotta raise at some point in time?
No, it's somewhere around, it's north of that.
Yeah, my point is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money that needs to tap into the residents, and it's gonna be hard, and I'm a taxpayer, and trust me, it hurts me, just as like it hurts everybody else, it's just, there's a need here, and I cannot see, I work in here every day too, and I cannot work in some of these spaces.
No, they need work, and I am not arguing that point at all. It is, you know, there needs to be something done. I just don't think that the process has been followed correctly to allow you to move forward with a Warren article at this point. That's my opinion as a, quite truthfully, as a taxpayer, but more specifically as an engineer that did this for a living.
No, and I do appreciate that, and I just, what bothers me is that we did the same process we did with the fire station, and it's being questioned, and it was very successful with the fire station, right? The bond discussion definitely is gonna always that thing, we present the bond, it's gonna be, that's the price tag, and we may have to go back and work the numbers again, but.
The one thing I don't have, I can't answer your question, is what level was the police station designed to when you actually set the numbers for the Warren article? I assume you had an engineer on board, you've got to some level of fifty percent design?
When the fire station was built?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So you don't even have an engineer on board now?
Well, we had, I think it was Ekman that was the company we were using at the time, and then we had Casabusa, I think it was the other, the architect?
Well, that's the engineer, Casabusa.
And Ekman.
Construction manager, but those, neither one of those are under contract to you.
Right, we just paid them eighteen thousand dollars to help refresh everything.
And that's not the way to do business. It's not appropriate way to hire, A, engineering services, they're supposed to be qualification-based selected. You're not supposed to just go out and pick who you want, and then construction manager, just as we've done for, you know, I was on the committee that did this building, we went out and interviewed and selected one, after we had an engineer on board, and we got fifty percent plans. That's the proper way to do this. So, you know, I appreciate the time and the consideration.
Thank you.
And I will close by saying, I am not here to say we don't need to do something. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Ron, he can answer some of these questions that he raised?
I'll be in tomorrow morning, and I, there was a study that talked about all the options, so we can do those, and again, the company that built, I wasn't here when the, when the town hired the people to relook at last year, there's possibility, but the builder who built the fire department is the same builder who's giving us the numbers for this building on a site that they already are aware of. So again, it's not to the fifty percent level that Mr. O'Leary is just talking about, but I think there are reasonable numbers in there.
Does anybody else have any comments? Mine would just be that on a, on a project with a price tag that this has, we had better make sure that all our ducks are in a row. Is the dotted, the T's across, because we don't want another LMS.
All I can say is that the previous town hall, when we did it, there was a separate group, separate from.
Like a building committee?
Yeah, and this has been different since the firehouse and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, the firehouse was built by people who were experts in fire housing, and police stations being built with, but experts in police stations. We should have our feedback, we should be able to be involved, which I believe we've been involved. If this board was not involved in the original decision to go back and rehash the original plans back in last year, shame on the board here, but I, for one, have been following the CIP meetings and listening to the presentations of why it is, I've been part of every tour that's been going on with this building and why it was needed, and was part of the original cutting it out because we couldn't afford it, but here we are now, five years later, and it's not getting any better.
Well, the chief is gonna be addressing, well, speaking later, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are you gonna be around?
He likes, he likes long meetings for some reason. That's how it starts, Ryan, it starts.
I heard what you said earlier, too.
We'd welcome you.
I will say that, like, I think that this has been a little bit more open than the middle school project was. I mean, the middle school project was, I mean, we were assured right and left that it was set to go, shovels were ready to go in the ground, the numbers were set, and yet we never heard the same number at two different meetings. I do believe that this has been a little bit better, but again, we have to be absolutely certain if we're gonna ask the taxpayers to foot the bill for this. Okay? And you've raised some very good points. And I'll leave it at that. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to come up? No, everyone else is business-related, all right. Okay, up next, then we have the twenty thirty-five to twenty thirty, town of Litchfield.
Twenty twenty-five.
I corrected, I corrected it when I typed it, too.
Ten years old.
I did read that wrong, didn't I?
So should I just throw this away?
Do you want my monitor? I don't know, this is two hours.
It's actually wrong in the portal, too, it's typed in strictly then.
All right, so we're going twenty thirty to twenty thirty-five?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty.
Five years.
Twenty twenty to twenty thirty-five, capital approval.
Twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty.
Mr. Croto, please get forward. You do this?
Mike, it's on the floor.
Did you like my solution?
It's on the floor, right, over there.
Is it?
Yeah. It's like I threw it off there.
Before we start, Ron, we got forwarded some information that went to the Budget Committee the other day, it's got a conceptual drawing, I'll call it, of that, plus, there's like four attachments, did you get that?
Yeah, it's the same one that's been going around for six months.
It's got the cost and everything, the cost breakdown and everything? A cost breakdown, but you do have it? Okay, all right. I'll get with you and I'll show you what I have, and if it's different, then I'll make sure you get it, okay? Got a computer that fits? Got four ports there? We getting a movie? Did you bring popcorn?
Presentation.
I could go for some popcorn. I could go for some popcorn. We all could, I think.
Want Jolly Rancher?
No, I'm not sure. John, you're probably better expert at this than I am.
If it's plugged in, it should just start.
It should just start?
If, if your screen's extended, yeah.
Okay. Hopefully I got the right thing here. What do you do? Start using, oh, WebEx, okay, WebEx.
It's 'cause it doesn't see a screen there. Let me just check.
Remember the days you had paper copies so much easier?
Can you just do a big poster board?
At least you saw something.
Anyways, welcome, Mr. Croto.
Oh, welcome. Sorry, we.
Here, I'll plug it. I, I have the presentation.
Glad to have you here.
Give me a sec, you can't stop talking. All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen, welcome. So it is my, um, esteemed pleasure, I guess, to, um, do the presentation for the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. We, uh, had several meetings this year, um, not a lot of stuff, but, um, stuff that probably the, uh, committee felt was urgent, um, to address. And if you just bear me one second, make this a lot easier for myself. So, the committee, um, was made up of, of course, is, it was made up of various members of the town, uh, including the planning board, the board of, uh, selectmen, the school board, uh, we have two citizen reps at large, uh, a representative from the budget committee, uh, the town administrator, um, Jayman Kara from NRPC, and, um, the business administrator for the Litchfield School District. The vision, uh, or the vision statement that was created by the Capital Improvement, uh, Committee when it was first, um, adopted, was that, um, it was intended to be a blueprint for the next six years. And so we are now looking at two thousand twenty-five to two thousand, to the year two thousand thirty. The focus was on the future growth of our town, its resources, prioritizing strategic short and long-term economic development goals, uh, cost impacts, as well as offsetting revenue sources. That is basically the scope of CIP review. It's also the aspects of our town's future considered by the CIP, and there are things that we would consider, including things such as heritage preservation and community character, uh, land use and growth management, preservation of natural resources, economic development, community services and facilities, infrastructure needs, and the replacement and continuing maintenance of town assets. The CIP Committee, um, puts forth a recommended list of capital needs across the town and the school district, in order, um, looking at things such as town investments, as well as, uh, trying to limit tax impact, uh, in a controlled manner. Uh, the CIP, uh, is a fully transparent board, um, of Litchfield residents. We welcome feedback, we, uh, seek Board of Selectmen, school board, and budget committee approval of recommended warrant articles, and we'll do so in March of two thousand twenty-five. And this is to begin in an actioned, in a phased and fiscally responsible manner, which is the purpose of, uh, the CIP, and to be a living, breathing document, essentially. So, the, um, CIP is, um, legally is by state statute, it's under statutory authority, um, that is RSA six seventy-four, colon, five, and six. In two thousand fourteen, uh, the town, um, put to warrant, um, to delegate the authority for the CIP to the Board of Selectmen. Typically, it is a planning board function, but you can also vote to have the governing body, um, be the, um, delegated authority as well. This is basically, was formed at the direction of the select board, this board. Uh, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee was created to develop a master plan of key projects spanning both town and school. Uh, typically, the plan looks at anticipated expenses from various departments, usually exceeding fifty thousand. Uh, it's important to note that this is document is, um, it's a planning document, okay, and all items within that plan uh, will need to be, be voted on by the respective boards, Board of Selectmen, the Budget Committee, the voters at town meeting. And it's, doesn't actually, i- it does not accurately reflect tax impact or actual funded projects at that stage. So once it goes into the hands of you folks, um, and other boards, then, uh, that becomes sort of the final say. Our meeting summary, you'll see, um, we went through from April first of two thousand twenty-four this year, all the way to, um, it looks like the review of the two thousand twenty-five projects was back in December second. We had our public hearing last week before the, um, the planning board, and tonight we're here with you, um, for this presentation. The Capital Improvement, uh, Plan, um, it outlines a schedule of proposed capital investments in land buildings and equipment, that's its purpose, over a period of at least six years. The committee decided, um, or I should say, projects I best are classified by need, urgency, and timing. Projects included in the CIP are based on information provided by the town, uh, the department heads, the various boards, like the Recreation Commission, Conservation Commission, uh, the library is also included, and information related to cost, needs, and sources of funding. Why do towns do this? Well, the CIP assists the Board of Selectmen, the Budget Committee, the voters, and their consideration of annual budget, uh, by placing large capital investments within the context of a long-term plan, and that's really what the CIP is. It's a long-term plan. And it is required, uh, to adopt a CIP under the statutory authority in order to continue to assess impact fees on new development. That's another one, that's important. What are the benefits? Um, impact fees allow the town to offset the costs of new buildings, equipment purchases, and other capital investments necessary to accommodate new, uh, residential development, um, costs that would otherwise be borne solely by the taxpayer. And then, as I said earlier, um, we need to ensure that the CIP remains a relevant and current as a planning budgetary tool, as a living, breathing document. So we're gonna start with the school, uh, school district, and first thing, um, is Griffin Memorial. So obviously, the elementary school, um, the project remains a top priority. Uh, it was rated urgent by the CIP, um, but as you are probably aware, there is another, uh, committee, the, uh, Facilities Improvement Committee in the school, that's doing additional research uh, to determine whether the new elementary school or the renovations of the existing GMS should be pursued. There's issues regarding state building aid that could be anticipated to partially offset that cost. However, we continue to keep it as urgent on the plan in priority ranking. The school district, there were other priorities, uh, just quick highlights, the Litchfield Middle School. We have the purchase of the solar array and storage. Um, the, uh, Capital Improvement Committee considered that as a, a necessary item for ranking this year. We have the one point eight million bond for three projects, the LMS paving, uh, parking lot, and access road, Campbell High School mechanical systems improvements, and the fields at LMS. Uh, those were all identified as necessary. And the district-wide capital improvements identified as necessary. Obviously, we just had a discussion about the police department, new police facility, that was another, um, high, uh, topic of discussion for CIP. It is the top priority among the Capital Improvement Committee. Looking at, um, construction or plans for construction in two thousand twenty-five, and the reason, obviously, highlighting the safety, space, and storage constraints within the facility. And the plan would include costs associated with phase-two buildout as an addition to the fire station, we mentioned, and cruiser replacement on an annual schedule as proposed. And you'll see that the priority ranking for the new facility and the replacement of three cruisers in two thousand twenty-five is an urgent need. Highway Department, we have our roads, um, so the town operating budget includes two hundred thousand for annual road improvements in accordance with the master road offs, offset by highway block grant funds. We also have additional improvements proposed, um, there's a total of, you know, four, uh, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars over the six-year period, which we've spread out. The block grant funds were prioritized as necess, uh, necessary as were the operating funds. The air is an equipment replacement of the two thousand international, uh, vehicle. Um, there may be potential grant funds available to offset part of that cost, and that was also a priority as necessary. Recreation Commission came in, um, they are looking at, um, improvements to, uh, Talent Hall and, uh, parks. Um, so highlights Talent Hall floor was considered an urgent need of replacement, um, as it cannot be resurfaced. Talent Hall, um, is basically in need of major improvements or replacement. Additional research is probably necessary, uh, to look into that, um, at this time. Sawmill Brook Playground, um, the Recreation Commission wanted to use impact fee revenues to minimize tax impact on, or warrant. Sawmill, uh, Sawmill Brook Park, uh, the resurfacing of the tennis courts is something, uh, that's come up, and there was a proposal for a new community stage. So the Sawmill Brook Playground, um, that was considered priority as desirable. The upgrade or replacement of the playground at Dare Pond, we, uh, priority, prioritized as research. Uh, replacing Talent Hall, uh, was a deferrable, uh, ranking, replacing the Talent Hall floor as urgent. Uh, the resurfacing of Sawmill Park tennis courts is necessary, and the new community stage, um, was considered desirable. The Conservation Commission, uh, as you know, there was a land acquisition fund. Highlights is the two million, uh, requested to purchase certain parcels of land. There was nothing really done with that, that is still on the plan, and it is considered, uh, a necessary, um, by the, uh, committee. And as you see, there is the, um, the complete, uh, schedule of the Capital Improvement Plan for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand thirty, and any questions? That's basically it.
A lot of us are seeing this for the first time. But, um, does anyone have any questions, comments? I do. First of all, thank you for your work. I mean, it's, you guys have done a lot of work on this, Mike. It's very good. My concern is that the price tags going forward and the impact on our residents, um, is very extensive, um, for some of this stuff. I mean, things that are deferrable, you can push them off, whatever, um. Just from my budget committee, uh, meetings the last few weeks, right now, on the town side, without the cost of the police station figured in, that's a thirty-one cent impact this year. Okay, and that's not counting the police station, because we don't have that number yet. The school, not including their actual budget for the year, which right now is up about one point, I think it's one seven or something. That's a lot, um, one point seven. Um, but without their budget, it's a sixty-seven cent increase. That is, it's almost a dollar per thousand.
Combined.
Combined. All right, just for those two, that's not counting any warrant articles, that's not counting any, their budget, our police station, which was our big warrant article item. I included all of our warrant articles in, in ours. Um, I did not include this, uh, I do have some of the schools in theirs, but, um, some I do not, but, um, the impact to taxpayers is really scary to me, especially families that have been here for a long time. Uh, not the upper-middle-income people that are now moving into town, but people that have established themselves. If we have, I'll say, our lone farming family in town that has decided they no longer want to pay taxes because the property taxes are extensive, they decide to sell, they're gonna sell to a developer. And then, Litchfield's not a farming community anymore. Kevin, I think you'll agree with me, all the farms are gone. But they used to be littered all over three A, and, and now there's basically just the one. And the one that's operating is really just feeding Massachusetts. They do noth, nothing that benefits the town of Litchfield. So, I mean, we're really not a commu, farming community anymore. We've become an, and a, a white collar. We used to be a blue-collar town, very blue-collar. Um, we're now a, a white-collar, almost an upper crust community, AKA Hollis or something like that. But again, I, my concern is the, the people that have lived here for a long period of time, fixed incomes, seniors, et cetera, the impacts on them. Um, I'm not poo-pooing the whole thing, I'm just, I'm, I'm presenting the other side of the argument, the people that are gonna feel a lot of this.
And again, these are recommendations.
Yeah, I know.
You guys are the ones that are gonna make the big decisions, so.
No, we don't make all the big decisions. There's another board in this town.
Ultimately, we have to present it to the voters for them to decide.
Everything's gotta go to the voters, yeah, but, I mean, it, it is, it's very concerning to me, um, a lot of the, a lot of the things that are, that are here.
Separate the school out of it for a second. We're on the town side, are you concerned, other than the police station, obviously, but who are the other concerns?
I mean, the school, a, a lot of those, um, like the improvements and stuff, uh, was really a placeholder. They didn't really have a lot to add to that. I think those, the ones that I highlighted, the LMS pavement and those types of projects in the plan, those are the ones that they seem to feel a hat, needed attention. We kind of left everything the, pretty much the status quo.
Yeah. It's, it's interesting that there is no, we have the inside outs, insight review that was done, and I think, like I said, I mentioned twelve million, but I think that you said it sits north of that, that's not even factored in this.
Yeah.
And those are just maintenance programs, that they have to either put money aside for something that's gonna happen down the road, or?
Well, my, my understanding and, uh, is that the Facilities Improvement Committee had done a survey, um, of the town. And so they were working on that survey as we were going through the capital plan. So I think, right now, it seems that there's still stuff that needs to be addressed with the survey, from my understanding. And, you know, or, yeah, perhaps Mr. DeBlinis can make, uh, can comment on that. I know he's on the Facilities Improvement Committee.
And Ron and I both are.
And, and yourself, Mr. Chair, so, um. And so, I mean, that, I think, we, we were kind of not sure where the school was gonna be heading, so, um, I think we sort of, we kept it urgent, the elementary school piece, knowing that there was gonna be something that was gonna happen, obviously, uh, that there were outcomes of the survey and ongoing discussions and so forth, so. But like I said, um, that information really, uh, is still in the works, from what I understand, so.
Yeah, I was trying to look up the onsite insight report, 'cause I thought, Ron, wasn't it around nine million dollars for the renovations that were needed, that they recommended for everything?
All three schools?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head was somewhere around twenty.
Twenty for everything?
That's over, that's over a twenty year.
Over a twenty year, but yeah, that includes future costs, yeah, but for right now, it was around nine, right? Dress everything at Griffin and the Campbell, what they need. I was trying to find it, I couldn't, I couldn't dig it up.
Well, right here, they got three point three million in total, so it's.
Well, right here, they got three point three million in total, so it's, this is really low-ballot compared to what we had. And when you look at the town side, I look at the town, other than, if we remove the police station for a moment, you have the highway department, which is, again...
To speak to that, we haven't caught up with CIP, I apologize, Michael. That truck has been replaced through a grant.
Yep.
Okay.
I thought you did.
So that's, that's off.
So that's off of there, right?
And the road improvements every year, I go for four hundred thousand, hoping someday to get that other two hundred thousand back.
Yeah.
But we kind of go against the block grant every year for two hundred thousand dollars, is what we do. So every year, we kind of roll whatever roads back in.
Yes.
So the highway right now, we don't really have anything major in CIP, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, to me, the highway was the normal expense. I, I thought the truck was just going to come by grant anyway, so I wasn't even thinking about the truck. Then you got the, you got the recreation facilities in all the locations. And if we don't, if we don't do certain maintenance, we're not going, we're going to lose the use of Talent Hall at some point in time.
We actually, through generous donation of pickleball, we had a structural engineer climb under the building to see if we could resurface it, and his report was, before you could even resurface it, you'd have to replace the beam, because the beam isn't up to spec.
Right.
So we'd have to re-beam, then you could do the floor, but the, the carriers for the beam should support it, but there'd be, actually, it might be a little bit more than two hundred thousand. So before you could even do the floor, you'd have to replace the beam.
Right.
And that report came in a week or two ago.
And that, you had rot, if I recall.
Yeah, my, my point is, bring it up, is that part, most of this is just maintenance items that we haven't, we've deferred and deferred and deferred. Like Talent Hall's been, I've heard about Talent Hall's floors for years, and it's like we've never done, we've done Band-Aids and Band-Aids and Band-Aids, and what would it have cost fifteen years ago to replace, or ten years ago to replace, so, I don't know. But, and that's a facility that's used heavily. I don't know why we would defer anymore, and we should address it, because it's used by every youth group we have, our seniors, everybody uses it, right? It's a, it's a facility, unless we're looking to replace the whole facility.
No.
With something that's more larger and more accommodating, it'd be different, that's a different conversation.
That's what they don't want to study on.
I'll just say it.
But it is used all the time, from what I'm hearing, year-round.
That building is used more than it has when I was growing up.
Yeah, there's a lot of demand on it, and I know from the younger, the youth leagues, there's not enough space to actually hold all the programs they want, hold them there.
Back in the day, we used to use it for the police and firemen's ball.
Right, and graduations.
Graduations? It was B-Y-O-B back then.
I think we should start using it for, I think we should start using it for deliberative, personally.
Yeah.
Just bring chairs in and have, we'll do it all there. Stop competing for the room.
Bringing room banter deliberative.
Take the bathroom, you're going to need something a little bigger than that.
So, no, Dara, Dara needs work, everybody knows that.
Yeah. So my point is, bringing it up, is none of this in the town, I, I can't speak to the school side, and I know the school has a lot of things to look in forward. On the town side, it seems all reasonable, and it's laid out in a way that these are, these are assets we need to take care of, and we should be taking care of.
And my understanding from the school superintendent, who was at our, one of our last meetings, there's going to be a lot of stuff for Campbell High School next year, so.
Oh, it's got to be coming, twenty-five years old at this point?
We're getting old too quick. I think you did a great job in the CIP stuff, you brought stuff in that needed to be brought up, at least.
Do we have to make a motion or anything to accept it, or?
Public hearing tonight, right? Well, you had the public hearing on the planning board.
They had the public.
The public hearing.
Yeah, we had a public hearing at the planning board.
Does she have a motion there?
No.
Okay. You just had to present, so the pub, what was the vote at the planning board?
So it was a presentation to you folks.
But the public hearing, how did it go? It was fine?
It went fine.
Okay.
We, we didn't have any...
Anamis, sir?
Yeah, Steve was there.
Oh, all right, so it passed the public hearing.
It took care of me. So this is our guide going forward, and it helps that it's going to set the impact fees, which is the real reason for doing this, is the impact fees.
Exactly, that's the purpose.
The rest of it is suggested for the board to take action on other needs. And that's up to us to decide.
And then we'll just go forward next year with...
The next step.
Next round.
Yeah, it'll be twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty thirty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty thirty-one.
Twenty thirty-one.
That was the capital T, was the that piece right there, versus school board down the bottom.
Is that what that was about?
Thank you, Michael.
Well, I want to thank everybody. Merry Christmas to all of you.
Merry Christmas.
Appreciate all the hard work.
We hope it helped, and thank you.
Just brought things out in the open, is what this has done, because a lot of people don't know what's going on.
Good night.
All right, where are we at now?
Looks like it's Dara Pond Dock. Okay, I got to figure out.
Up next, George Lavash and Judy Brennan.
George, you want to plug in?
Yep.
Dara Dock, grant request.
Let me get my popcorn.
Or is it Dara Dock, and then Judy has a grant request?
Exactly. Dara Dock.
It's kind of the same.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
They go together.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, I can't even make this bigger, huh?
George Lavash, Thirteenth Pearson Street, Litchfield.
Judy Brennan, Twenty-three Aldrich Street, Litchfield. I'm here as a rep from the Recreation Commission, Conservation Commission.
Thanks. Okay, but we're, I don't know, I'm not doing this on behalf of the Conservation Commission, I don't think, you know, we're just doing this...
Okay.
Working together.
We're working together.
Across the...
Okay, so our goal is to improve the access to Dara Pond, it gets quite a bit of use now. If we were to put a dock down there, we'd get even more use. I think some of the members of the board can remember swimming down there as kids, and swimming across the lake, and the big dock complex they used to have. My son used to swim down there when he was growing up in town, so it'd be great if we could bring that back, and so this is one of the steps going forward. So the state of New Hampshire allows you to put a thirty-foot-long dock on any property, and there are some stipulations, and I'll get into that in a little bit, but, so what we're going to do is try to put in a thirty-foot-long dock, six-foot wide. The reason why we want it so wide is because it's going to be the primary thing down there at the beach, so we can have a couple people fishing off of it, or somebody can launch a kayak more easily off of it. We will be able to take it in and out. These dock systems now come with wheels, so there'll be a set of wheels on the deep end, maybe another one midway, so we'll be able to pull it in and out with a tractor or a truck, or even by hand. We're looking to go with aluminum decking, so no painting, no maintenance, we want this, and it'll be very sturdy. And we're going to have a ramp to allow, like, wheelchair access or walker access to get onto the dock. As I said, this, it's pretty straightforward, registering a dock with the state, they have an online application where you just fill out a bunch of forms, and if it meets certain criteria, it's, it's a pretty easy process. So I've already gone through and filled out the form, just to see how tough it was. The only thing that I came across, there was a little sticking point, is I just need to get an online copy of the deed, which I'm sure we can get somewhere, I just didn't have that. So these are the quotes that I got, I got three different quotes, and now this is all aluminum construction, and from three different companies that are in the area. So we can go thirty feet into the water, so one of the, the first one here has a, three sections of ten feet long, okay? And this second line here, this would be a cost of a four-foot-wide dock, and I, I got this quote before the ramp criteria came in, and I didn't ask for a four-foot ramp for the update, I only got a price on the six-foot ramp, but, so all of these include a six-foot-wide ramp. So it's just under, so it's eighty-five hundred, just under nine thousand dollars, there'll be three ten-foot sections from this company. They have the pieces in stock, there was a question by the Rec Commission, like, how long would it take if we were to order it? These guys have the pieces in stock, so it would be immediate, if we were to order it, we can get it right away.
George, is eighty-five for all three sections, or eighty-five?
All three sections.
Eighty-five per section?
No, it's the total cost. So this AB docks in Merrimack, the brand of the dock is Hewitt, they came in at eleven five, they have two sixteen-foot sections, okay? Now that's thirty-two feet, so only thirty feet can be in the water, there'd be two feet on land, and still we would have a ramp to that two-foot section. And here, Granite State Dock, it's a Shoremaster brand, they were by far the most expensive, and they're eight-foot sections, so we would get four eight-foot sections here, and they're located in Derry. There are potentially other places we could look, but this is three, and it gives you a rough ballpark, so it's from nine to thirteen thousand is the cost, and we're looking to use a grant money in order to do this, we're not looking to pay for this...
Tax dollars.
With tax dollars.
Okay.
So this is just an example of what these docks look like. I just put these in here so you guys can take a look, so you can see the, the wheels on the end, and we're like eight feet to ten feet deep at thirty feet out, so it would look a little bit different there, they have deep-water kits for these things. This is the FWM dock system, and you can see the stamped aluminum decking, and that's similar to what'll be on all of these, and here it shows two sets of wheels. Couldn't find a really good picture for Shoremaster, they're at the very top, I'm not sure if we'd go with them, but again, that's the aluminum.
It's got the slip-resistant grooves on it.
Right, so, and most of them are similar, okay? They're just, just slightly different. And this was a picture that was taken at the Fall Festival, you can see all the people that were down there fishing, and these kids are just standing on rocks, you can see on the left, right? So, you know, if we were to put a dock out there, we'd get a lot more...
More kids out there.
Yeah, more people using it, right?
Yep, and me.
So that's all I have for that.
So these are stationary, they don't float?
They, they do not float, so...
We try to get this, you know, deeper than the water, and so maybe a foot or two above at times?
Right, it does, it fluctuates, the water level fluctuates a little bit, we could even roll it out and in if the water fluctuated.
So the Hewitt, I had a Hewitt when we were up north, and you, basically, the wheels you set for the depth you want, it's a calculate, you gotta play a game to get it to level?
Yep.
And then you set the posts to hit sand to keep it sturdy.
You can adjust it when you get out there to drop it.
Yeah, you probably, probably should get in the water to do it, but easier. But once you set it, it's, you can, other than pulling the legs up to reel it back out, it's, it's kind of, leave it alone.
Yep.
Okay, so that's all I...
So, where are you going to store it in the winter? Because it looks like you have ten-foot slats or sixteen.
We would just put it right on shore.
Oh, yeah, I could put it in like the old fire station? I wasn't sure.
Oh, no, oh, no.
It could fit in there, ten-foot versus sixteen-foot slats.
It's been in the water all year.
I'd put it up against the tree line, basically, right?
I just didn't know where you were going to keep it, I didn't know you'd keep it out all year.
Yeah, we, we pull it up and maybe turn it, you know...
Yeah, so it's even with the trees, yeah.
Parallel to the...
Matter of fact, if you cover up for the eight-foot, by the time you get up, it's still going to be flat out there. If the elevation works.
So, so maybe I want to, let's see if I can, I might want to bring up one other point while we're talking about this. So you would think that this would be in conjunction with the milfoil program that I was trying to bring in, or the Conservation Commission was trying to do coming up. So I came across a water survey, survey team from the New Hampshire State, the DES, looking at Nessunke Brook, when I was, we were down there working on the bridges, and I befriended these guys, sent them some pictures of them in the water, and they said they were doing some, they would send me the samples, or the data of the fish that they collected, and so we got to see all the different fish that were in the brook. One of the guys was also in charge of doing the DES study of Dara, so they're doing a study of Dara, and it's a three-year-long study period. So he sent me an email saying that he just wanted to let me know that he noticed that the visibility in the lake was a lot less than it was last time. Okay, so I've got this little chart here, so in eighty-five, you could see, they have this thing called a Sichijix, or it's a black-and-white disc that they lower to the, and into the water, and they test how far down they can see that disc. So you used to be able to see twenty-five feet down, so to the very bottom of the pond in eighty-five. In two thousand and one, you could see it twelve feet, and just this September, it was three point three feet, one meter down. So the visibility of the, of the pond is just going down. And that, what's kind of concerning is the total phosphorus level. So it's now, this is parts per milliliter, I think, or something like that, but it's now ten times the level that it was in nineteen eighty-five. So I got these two data points, and I shared these data points with Conservation and Rec. And the town administrator, I guess, saw me give the presentation, and she asked me to forward all of the DES data that I had. Now, this is the only DES data that I, that I have, this person just sent me these two data points, and I guess she reached out to DES and wanted to get the full study. Now typically, they don't, they don't publish it for three years, but I think she got the rest of that data. Did she share that with you?
No, yeah.
Oh, yeah, she's got it, and she has nothing else.
All right, so I guess it's important, because Dara is listed as an impairment in town with the MS4 study, so this high phosphorus level has been known for a while. Now, this is the first time I found out about it, and with this phosphorus level, if we were to do the weed kill, when I spoke to you about that earlier, we were going to do it in stages, three stages at a time, because when you kill the weeds, they drop to the bottom, they dissolve, I mean, they decay, and that takes up some of the oxygen in the water. And so you do it in stages so that you don't kill the fish. Well, we're already at a tipping point here, where we don't want to be adding more nitrogen into the water if we were to do this milfoil kill. So I'm going to check with DES to see whether they say we should halt it, or whether we should move forward, but this was sort of a red flag for me, I didn't know the phosphorus levels were this high. So what I, so I don't know if you guys know this, okay, so this phosphorus comes from a bunch of different sources, okay? It can come from this decaying organic matter, like I said, if the weeds die every winter and they, they fall down. And then it also comes from human sources, okay? And this can come from, and I caught, cut and paste this off the web, fertilizers, manure, pet waste, septic systems, okay? Now, Dara Pond is spring-fed, there are no tributaries, and there's no streams going out of it, okay? So we don't have any flushing going on, so the phosphorus isn't going to get flushed out, and there isn't anything really coming in, in some stream, it's got to be fed from the environment right around the pond. So what do we have right around the pond? We have the fields, the athletic fields, you know, they get fertilized, all the butters might fertilize their lawns, we have a butter septic systems, and there is a horse farm that is in a butter, and they could possibly have some runoff from the horse manure. So I think what we need to do is just reach out to the residents, and we have best practices already on our stormwater management page, I just found out about that, but I think we should make a dedicated effort to educate the butters around the pond for, towards best practices to help maybe save the pond. Okay, so I just want to let you know that we need to take steps sort of to maybe figure out where this phosphorus is coming from, and I don't want to add to it by doing the milfoil kill, so that may not happen this year.
So to add to that, Ryan Lane is the president of Natticook Landscaping, who does our fields, and he was, he saw, he watches the meetings, and he responded, and he said that they do not utilize any fertilizers that contain phosphorus, and any nitrogen uses, used at a, held to a tight minimum. So I would, you know, definitely Ryan is on board, and he's keeping an eye on what he's doing, so we'll make sure.
Yeah, and I went and toured the field, as soon as I found this out, I went to see if there was any potential runoff, and it's sort of crowned at the tree line there, so, and the field is below that, so I don't believe we have runoff, but I, you know, I'm just listing all the possibilities.
Yep, yep. But I'm just letting you know that our landscaping crew's on board with you as well, and he would, he would do whatever he has to do.
So those, that was my, my part of the presentation.
Yeah, you have a lot of decay in that pond right now, I mean, I've been down to it, going to softball games and whatever, and I see a lot of things growing in the water and dying, and dead fish and all that stuff, so you have a lot of decay there.
Oh, another source of phosphorus is bird poop, so we have a large number of... So we have a large number of geese in that pond. So I've gone down there to do some studies of it, and there's two or three hundred geese.
Is it open season yet?
Well, it just, it just, it's frozen over actually right now.
Oh, is it?
So, but there can be two to three hundred geese down there. And so you can limit geese by, they don't like swans. So we're gonna look into buying some swan decoys. And we'll see how those work.
Something that looks nice, looks work.
Natural predators, they like it.
So REC fits into this as our mission is to provide activities to residents of the town, all ages and all abilities. And I started looking around at different grants and what might fit this best or best hopes of having it paid for through a grant. And what I found was AARP through their livable communities, their community challenge grant. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, I had come and done a presentation for the board about the livable communities providing activities for all ages and all abilities. And then we had some kind of town emergencies that came up and kind of put that on the back burner. So they offer a variety of different grants, even if you are not part of the livable communities. If you are part of livable communities, you probably have a better shot of getting the grants. But our mission aligns with them. They started doing grants in twenty seventeen. They've given out over twenty million dollars in grants throughout the US, Washington DC, Puerto Rico, and the US Virgin Islands. Last year alone, they awarded three hundred forty-three grants totaling three-point-eight million dollars. These are all what's considered a quick-action grant, which means you're given a couple months to apply. Once you've been selected for the grant, you have to have your project completed by December fifteenth. So that would be December fifteenth of twenty twenty-five, with your final end report due by December thirty-first. So it's not something that can be dragged out. And their application opens January eighth, I believe. And that's why we wanted to get in as soon as we couldn't get a jump on it if it's approved for us to do this. So we would apply for the flagship grant, which is geared towards creating vibrant places that improve open spaces or improve your existing parks with access to other amenities. So Dara fits that where there's a playground, there's basketball courts, that's where indoor pickleball is. It butts the bike trail, which is huge because they look at different accessibility and different ways to access it. Can people walk there? Can they ride their bike? Can they drive there? So those are all, would all be pluses in applying for this. It definitely meets the all-age category where it's not just for kids. And of course, because it comes from AARP, they want to see something in there geared for fifty years old and above. So they wouldn't fund something like a playground or, you know, a youth basketball court, something like that. Examples of grants that are awarded were covered outdoor work area in one park, adding a walking path in a dog park, installing lights and benches on a three-mile trail, making, increasing accessible walking paths in existing parks. So I think that going with the wider width and having a ramp walk up versus steep step helps with accessibility to others. We, the Recreation Commission does maintain the beach and rakes it several times a year to keep it clear, to try to keep it level. And it is not a, if you've been down there, it's not like, you know, ocean beach sand. It's more of a hard-packed sand, and we feel like we'd be able to continue maintaining that to help with access to it. Things that are, we'd be assessed on in the application is the impact on the community. Is it bringing a positive change? Does it help grow or sustain the community to make it more livable for others who are living here? Does it have an impact or is it usable by those who are over fifty? They look at execution. Is your project something that can be done in this short amount of time and within the budget you have provided? What are, it looks at what are the disparities, and in our case, it's inclusive of all ages, all genders, all race and income. And then they look at innovation, your creativity, your design, and other, other things in that area that help enhance it, which in this case, we have, like I said, the bike path. We have an existing park there. So it's just providing another activity there for all ages in the community. If we, this were approved and we didn't get the grant, the plant could just be, you know, put on hold and maybe used in the future with impact fees or finding another way to fund it. So the Recreation Commission is in favor of it and in favor of the larger size, the six-foot, and having the ramp versus smaller and a steep step up.
I was gonna say, I was gonna suggest that you also go to thirty-two. And the only reason I'm saying that is it allows you to get a little more ramp out into the sand, a little further up, and potentially get it so it's not down and then going back up. It's going more level as a potential. I know with respect to the grants, one side, one other part of this, but with respect to the dock itself, I think, we just spoke to the town administrator. She did reach out to our Primex and all to see whether there were any concerns associated with the dock. And as long as we're not negligent and it's being taken care of and we do all the right things, it's not an issue. We'd be covered from an insurance perspective. There were some criteria that they would ask about. It has to be well-maintained, which means we have to have it regularly checked and inspected and reported and recorded, and then that has to get filed with the joint loss. So they have it as a record for Primex to show that we're doing all the right things. Signage is gonna be really important. Hours of operation needs to be really, has to be posted and stated. There is a requirement, their, Primex is saying that gate needs to be closed and locked to limit traffic when the park's actually closed. I know that's an open issue, and I know it hasn't really happened. And then, and beyond that, I think the police department, we need to give their feedback if there's any concerns from their perspective. But it seems like a great project.
Is that just with Primex and Litchfield? Like Nashua has floating docks that are part of their Parks and Rec program where they are floating and you can, well, you can sit on them, but you can get in your canoe or your kayak.
Yep.
But those aren't per se locked.
No, I think the issue was control and access after hours when the park's physically closed.
Yep.
So I think that there's a suggestion that we should start closing that gate to the facility in general. Keep people out of the park after dusk.
Yeah.
That's all.
You can still get in.
I know, you can still walk around, but no car can drag you down, yeah. It's a turn. Nothing will ever stop someone from hopping to fence if they want to get across.
Well, we did have it locked for a while. Then it becomes, because people do go use it and bring their canoes down there or their kayak, and then they're calling town hall, or they're like, who do I call? Who's gonna unlock it so I can get my boat down there? And then we also had a lot of people dumping big things in the dumpster, but the dumpster's locked now, so that's no longer the issue. We did get new signage that we planned to put up in the spring too to keep vehicles from going down there, especially with the playground and.
Yeah, I think the, I think the biggest thing is just make it so we have a maintenance plan and it's maintained.
Mm-hmm.
It's checked, concerned.
I think we already have our online maintenance thing, so we just filed the maintenance ticket. We put a picture in there. It'll be dated, time-stamped.
Yeah, we can actually have that automatically get sent to the joint loss, where I can automatically say.
There, we could, yes, put another dropdown.
And I don't know how, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't outline the frequency, I would assume, once every other week or something like that. And make sure it's not being vandalized and some kid hasn't pushed it off to the other side, kind of thing. But I think it's a great project. I mean.
There's also the note from town admin about building the dock, and that person would have to have insurance and all that. How would we just have to deliver it and then, it looks like it's pretty straightforward, not much to do.
Yeah, it's just a few bolts that hold it. It's very straightforward. Yeah, we will be putting it together.
And I think that's a, that's a grant requirement, I think, has the requirement to make sure the people have the insurance to put it in play to get the ARPA grants.
Well, could the REC and Conservation?
It's town insurance at that point, yeah.
Yep.
They have the insurance.
This grant also does require you to use some volunteers in the process of whatever your project.
That's what ARPA is all about.
Yeah, I think her note was that the flagship or the demonstration grant typically carries, the organization agrees to carry and maintain a comprehensive general liability insurance of a million dollars. If the town is doing it, I would assume the town would be doing it.
We're covered already.
Well, just like anybody we get who comes onto our property has to provide
Right.
a certificate of insurance for a million dollars or more if it involves alcohol. Like, and we just required that just of having the shed roof replaced.
Okay. Well, I, I'll make a motion, if you want, I'll make a motion that we approve the REC mission for draft, to draft and submit proposal to the AARP Community Challenge for the Dara Dock Project. And also that all copies of the proposal, all emails, all correspondence related to the grant are to be submitted to the town administrator and financial director per policy. So just anything you do with it, any forms you fill out, let's make sure that they both have.
And I believe Mr. Leary, as the highest elected official in town, is gonna require your
It's in there, it's in there.
Your signature and your approval, because it, that's.
I can do that for you.
If we had a mayor, it would be the mayor, but we don't, so.
The chair is the unofficial mayor of the town.
It's the highest elected official who would have the sign off.
I'll second that motion.
There are motions from Mr. Brennan and a second from Mr.
I know Judy's here, but Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Brunel and a second from this.
It's been months since you've done that. I don't know why you did it again, because you're in the room.
Any further discussion?
I think it's because you flatter him being the highest person.
Any further discussion?
No, I just, I just cannot believe how simple a dock could be put together. I was expecting this huge project, and I see wheels and just a couple of legs, and out it goes. It's low-impact and, you know, I mean, it's a little to put in, but great. Yeah, it's so simple.
That area gets, the pond gets used more than you would think. There's always people down there, whether they're sitting, whether they're there's one woman who swims every morning and she rakes out milfoil every day in the nice weather, pulls some out, yeah.
And some people go down there and count the geese.
Yeah.
They're gonna be gone.
A lot of people fish down there.
I agree with that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Try not to let you down with the green.
Your husband's always successful, so you should be.
I know, yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, y'all.
Love you.
Steve, I'm gonna hold you for a little bit and let Mr. Brown go next, because I think his are gonna be shorter than yours, maybe a little bit longer.
And he may have to go out again tonight, so.
Yeah, we may get that inch of snow.
Really?
I'm just, I'm supporting you standing up here.
Tomorrow morning.
George, you can't leave your wife hanging. Sit down.
Mr. Brown, transfer station, highway department paving, and then also it's gonna go right into the stop sign.
Yes. So we spoke a few months ago about paving, recycling way, adding some catch basins, paving recycling center and the highway department yard. We got a revised quote on continental paving for three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Last time we spoke, you asked us to figure out a way to pay for it, and we have. I'm sure you guys have the numbers down in front of you. Two hundred thousand dollars for the block grant. Fifty-six thousand, I believe it is, from the previous block grant, from the COVID block grant. And then seventy-one thousand dollars we'd like to encumber from this year's paving.
It's, yeah, seventy thousand, seven-two-two is from this year's paving, well, remaining from the twenty-twenty-four highway block grant.
Right, yeah. And of course, we'd like to use that money and the previous block grant money prior to taking from this coming year's block grant for the rest of it, and then we'll have some money leftovers for, you know, for town paving. So we're asking for your permission to accept the quote and encumber the money and take care of something that's been in need for many, many years.
I think the last time we spoke about it, we all agreed that it was our priority. The paving up and down recycling way around the facility at the recycling center, which gets a heavy use, plus around highway, which gets a lot of use from heavy vehicles, is deteriorating.
It's getting old.
You can take a ride down. It's very visible.
So watch out for the potholes.
Watch out for the potholes. We repair it. We've got a couple of catch basins that are sinking that need repair no matter what. It's used heavily by the public. We've been putting it off, putting it off. Right now, the roads in town are in really good shape. You know, we benefited from, one upside from the PFOAs is we got a lot of penetrant work done. So we have a lot of roads that were paved, you know, putting in penetrant water. So we're in good position to do it now. Now would be the time to do it. You know, do I want to do it? Yeah, I want to do it, but it's something we need to do. So basically, they're gonna go in and put two catch basins further up recycling way. And if you know when you come in, there's a huge puddle on the left-hand side to catch that water to bring it further down. Replace the two, well, rebuild the two catch basins that are there, existing. Mill and grade and repave the entire asphalt in the front and back.
Yeah, court's right here.
Yep.
Yep.
I see it.
The coast's a little weird. It puts all the graving on. It puts all the, it puts all the, it's.
Detailed.
Yeah, but it's, but it's broken up a little funny. Like the reclaim the pavement, they put it all on the town shed, but it's for the whole project. It is broken down, but it's not, it's not lined up correctly, but.
Well, it's the operation. It is to the town shed, but it's also to the recycling center. You're all one.
I'll, I can make the first motion, I guess. There's two motions I think we need to make, right, to encumber the seventy thousand. So I'll make a motion that, that we encumber the two thousand and twenty-four highway block grant funds in the amount of seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars for the twenty-twenty-five transfer station highway department project.
I will second that motion.
Motion for Mr. Brunel, second for Mr. Gannon. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Okay, I'll make the second motion. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five transfer station and highway proj, sorry, highway department project in the amount not to exceed three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars with Continental Paving LLC. Seventy thousand, seven twenty-two to come from the twenty-twenty-four encumbrance from highway block grant of two hundred thousand to come from the twenty-twenty-five highway funds and thirty-three thousand, twenty-one dollars from special highway one-time funds.
I will second that motion.
Motion for Mr. Brunel and a second for Mr. Gannon. Any discussion?
I think it's, it says Continental Paving Inc., not LLC.
Uh, it's, well, the motion says, the motion says LLC, but I'll stand corrected. It's.
I just want to make sure, that's all. I don't know if we have to modify anything with the motion, but.
And this is to be done next year.
We can just get rid of the LLC and just the Continental Paving, just one.
Did we do the paving this year?
Yeah, we did the paving, yeah. Olive Chase Park, Larry, Jeff, Pilgrim, yep, Cutler.
Cutler got fixed.
Oh, great.
Bumpy's gone.
You can do a hundred miles an hour down there now.
Yep.
Well, that's great.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you all.
Don't go too far.
Yep.
All right, so second, there's been a lot of talk about the traffic, the traffic sign on
Sentry.
Sorry, Sentry at the intersection of Albuquerque. I'm gonna bore you just a little bit, just so everybody has an understanding of how we implement, how we put signs down. Federal government has mandated that every state follows or has a, what do they call it, a like, a uniform standard under the guise of manual on uniform traffic control devices, or MUTCD. I'm gonna call it manual from now on, so I don't have to replace that whole thing out. You either have to adopt this, the federal government's manual, or you have to have something that is in place combined. State of New Hampshire um s- does not have, or is it? New Hampshire Department of Transit has adopted MUTCD, MUTCD. State's Traffic Design Division interprets and applies MUTCD and maintains traffic standard plans and specifications. I can give you all a copy of this. It gives you uh statute section twenty-three uh two thirty-six point seven zero uh which requires MUTCD compliant signs um in all areas. So basically, we follow federal government standards on where we put signs. Bear with me. Alignment of stop signs, uh stop sign should be placed in line with the stop bar. So when the stop bar is determined by a hundred and fifty feet of of observable um vision either way. So this stops uh this stop bar here is where it should be. The stop sign should be at the stop bar unless it's a crosswalk, then it's four feet back from that. They do stipulate that if there is a a blockage of the sign, you can move it up to fifty feet, but they prefer not to have that type of distance. I did some measurements. I'm gonna move that. I would like the permission to move that sign about seven feet back, so it would probably be right about where the corner of that first snowbank would be.
To the left. To the right.
All right, to the right, excuse me, yes, to the right.
It makes sense.
That snowbank.
Yep.
And then also what I'd like to do is back um at the culvert, past that second gray house, um I want to put a stop ahead sign.
Yep.
Okay, so that people know the stop head's coming. And then in the summer, when the weather dictates, I'm gonna put a stop ahead uh painting probably where that's first car is, so you know it's coming. And then I'm gonna put stop at the stop bar.
Okay.
On on the asphalt. If that is not enough, the manual also states that we can put a stop sign on the left side facing traffic coming this way. All right, so you can put one. I find that I think that might be a little confusing, but as long as it's not facing the traffic coming the other direction, it's you know, so if you're driving up, you're gonna see the stop sign. The only problem I have with that is if it gets foggy, people might want to wander off towards that.
Thinking they're on the other side of the stuff.
Right, so they'll be on the wrong side of the road. So that's a last case scenario of, you know, that's that's a an emergency scenario, but we'll move that sign seven feet with your permission. And then we're gonna put a stop ahead down by the culvert, and then in the summer, we will put wording on the road, stop ahead and stop. I would like to also put a stop ahead sign on the other side of Century coming back towards Albuquerque. I'm not sure whether we'll put the stop lettering on the road just because there is a crosswalk there and it's a double stop bar. So I don't want to I don't want to really overconfuse people that they already stopped at the at the crosswalk and they don't have to stop at the cross at the at the actual stop bar.
Yep.
Uh but with your permission, it is your jurisdiction to allow signs to be placed. You give me that authority to do that.
So years ago, the stop sign was somewhere around there. Is it gonna go back kind of where it was where you will see it?
I I would assume. I I've only saw one picture of what it was.
Yep.
Um as of right now, by law, that's where it's supposed to be.
Yep.
Now, I understand that pushes in the way. Um I did I did uh the the chief of police have had did speak with the owner of that, and we were going to ask him if we could cut it back, but you know, um that would become a yearly issue.
Right.
We didn't. We did not. After the last meeting, I I did not approach the uh the resident because I wanted to take a look at it and look up the laws and figure out where we stood. So we can move that back. Now, you know, the closer it gets to the road there, then you know, uh more likely it's gonna hit by plows or by people, but that's part of the the business of being a sign, I guess.
After Mrs. Lavash came here and talked to us about it, I took a ride. And like I said, I I live here, so I know there's a road, you know, there is a stop sign there. But if you're not from here, you really don't see that stop sign until you actually see where that mailbox is, you're right upon it.
I I agree. I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And it, you know, like we spoke before, John, I think you and I spoke about it, the way that this road is, it as it flares out, you know, for easier access, um that's where it's supposed to be. If you if you come up that and you come up that stop bar, you can see that you have, you know, you have visual uh direction on both sides. If we move if we move that stop bar back, then you would you would lose your visibility, you know, for the traffic coming from the south.
And if you're traveling from that direction heading, I guess it would be west.
Yeah.
Um it's a bit of a mirage because Century's such a s- a s- straight road that you don't even see Albuquerque's there until, and my concern is like, we're residents, we know it's there, but uh Judy just left. She had friends in town. That's a pretty busy area for all those houses, and they blew through the stop sign, and I think they got an accident because they didn't realize it was there, you know, it's by the time you see it, it's too late because when you're looking at it, you're just thinking this road goes for two miles.
And I don't want anybody to believe that. We know. We don't take it. We don't take it seriously. Don't
Oh.
not a consideration because but there is a process, you know, there are there are rules. We can't just take a sign and move it whenever we feel like it because we don't like where it is. So that's why I'm here tonight, just to ask you permission to put those signs in and take those steps, and we'll maintain that.
I don't have a problem with it. I got no problem with it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, good at tries, he would have.
Makes sense.
Very safe on that side.
We don't need a motion for that.
No. Just a permission. If you want a motion, I don't.
No, you don't need it. Just do it. You're good.
I think the minutes will show that we're in agreement. Take your actions, the correct, and see if it helps and.
Only other way is to put an island in the road there. Get plow around it.
I'm all about that. I'm all about road. I want to put a whole bunch of road.
She was here last time.
Works in Hollis.
Did you want to say anything? Cause you brought it up.
No, I mean, I guess in I I don't. In twenty nine, the the photo from twenty nineteen, it was, I think where you're suggesting it to be, and we never had a stop ahead.
Yeah.
I I so I'm not sure if we I don't want to spend more tax tax money, and the signs are very expensive, you know, so but you know, um I I think their original location where the sign was fell within the manuals guidelines. I don't know why it was moved to this new location.
Cause that's honestly, just probably because that's where the law senses should be.
That it should be at the end of the stop line?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's what.
There's just not a lot of signs, stop signs. If you look at Cummings, it doesn't have their stop sign. It's in front of them. Um at the corner of um uh Lance and Century, the stop sign is not at the stop line. Almost every stop sign in this whole development, the stop sign is.
Now you know he's gonna go around and look at every one of these.
He might get.
It's probably.
You know, so i- i- if you think it's, I I just think it's horrible where it is right here, right now, and in cutting the plants, I I like you said, it would be a yearly issue.
Yeah.
You know, so let's let's try this and see how it goes from there.
Yeah. It's like you have belts and suspenders, you got both. And a third one with the paint coming, right?
Yeah.
So that side's safe. I'm not talking about the other side, but this side is.
Flash a flashing red light will be next.
I gave I gave I gave you I gave you the cost on those.
I know.
You know what I mean? If we're not gonna do it in Albuquerque, I don't think we're gonna do it on Century.
It's a good. It's a good step, I think.
Yep.
You got the solo ones, right?
Yeah.
Those are more expensive.
Fourteen thousand dollars. Eighteen hundred dollars a piece.
I mean, this time of year, it's most visible. It's not visible.
It's the vegetation.
Not not disagreeing at all. And the reason and the reason why it would be at that position is because of the law, because because it states it should be at the cross at the stop bar.
And that got.
Whether it's whether it's the right place for it or not, that's that's a different story. It's where it's supposed to be by the law. So whoever moved it, and I I don't remember moving that. I know that's been hit because it does have a stub where we placed it in, then we mounted it to a bracket or someone did. Um I don't know. I don't ever remember moving it myself. But we will move it seven feet towards towards the uh east side, southeast.
Yep.
And and then I will put up a stop ahead sign and I'll paint stop ahead on the roads in the spring.
Very good.
And then and then then we cover it, then we've done everything we possibly can to
Yep.
mitigate this issue.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Any other road signs we have to talk about?
Maybe eventually Lance and Century that hallway.
I'll be down here tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we're gonna bring Police Chief up. And he's got a couple of.
Well, we gotta go back.
We have the police prosecutor contract. We'll do that first.
Sure, I believe you have a copy of it.
Yes. Yep.
So the new contract wouldn't take effect until uh September first of twenty twenty-five. So the e- effective cost difference uh for this contract would would only be eleven hundred dollars roughly, so I'm not looking to add any money to my budget for next year. I would just eat that and then adjust it moving forward from there. So back, big picture, this is a three-year contract with our prosecutor.
Yep.
Um I will say that uh he's been uh just amazing. Uh I wasn't here for the previous prosecutor. I heard good things about him as well, but um Prosecutor Moore does an amazing job. He's very attentive to us. He's available whenever we call him, email him. Uh it's actually a good scenario for us is he uh also prosecutes for Bedford. We share the same record management system, so he's able to work his cases from either location.
That's even better.
Yeah, so it's it's it really works out while he goes to the same court, uses the same system, so uh it's been very good. The and I don't know how much detail you want, you know, on verbally with you having the contract, but it is a a five percent increase the first year and roughly three and three after that. Having said that, the actual expense from twenty twenty was seventy-eight thousand four fifty-three for the prosecutor. Back then, it was a different prosecutor. And at the end of this contract, uh it's gonna be seventy-three thousand four forty for twenty twenty-eight, so eight years later, it's gonna be over five thousand dollars less than we paid in twenty twenty. So I would say this is more than reasonable, especially for someone who is really just doing an amazing job. And if you break down the number of cases he does a year, uh we're looking at roughly sixteen hundred dollars per case, which I don't know if anybody's hired an attorney lately, uh but that's a very reasonable cost.
And he's gonna, when is he starting? Supposed to start?
He's already.
Oh, he's here. He's the he's the one who's per-
Yeah, he's current now.
He's he's been here. This is a a renewal of his contract.
Okay.
So again, from what I've seen in the year I've been here, he's just been amazing. I haven't heard anything nega- negative about him in the entire time I've been here. He's very attentive to our needs and um again, I I.
Okay.
It's good to have somebody like that.
I make the motion to approve the contract between the Town and Litchfield Police Department and Jason D. Moore Esquire for the Municipal Prosecuted Services for the period of September first, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
You can decide.
I can decide?
Who you can decide who gets the second.
They're sitting next to each other. We have a motion for Mr. Gannon, a second for Mr. Lynch. Close third by Mr. Brown.
A table thing?
Is there any discussion? Okay.
I I will just say that I've worked with all three prosecutors.
Mm-hmm.
And this current one is very interactive and very available. Um I think it's a great choice to keep him going, so.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Very good.
Thank you.
All right.
I wanted a fun one.
Which which one is the fun one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The ten?
Yeah, the um.
The police station?
Yeah, the police station.
Police station. So really, it's uh all I wanted to let you know now is uh on January ninth, we'll be doing a presentation for the Budget Committee.
Okay.
So I just wanted to formally let the board know. Um there'll be a PowerPoint with more details, obviously, and and some videos uh leading up to that uh on January eleventh, which is a Saturday from nine to twelve, and then on Monday evening from five PM to six thirty PM, January thirteenth, prior to the board meeting on January thirteenth, we'll have an open house to allow the public to come in and and look at our facility now.
And I think the 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 important action here for this topic is we have to approve the bond paperwork, just begin that processing at that place and done. Whether we use it or not this year, we still gotta do it to get the numbers that we need to bring forward if we're gonna bring forward.
Mm-hmm.
And that's attached. There's an engagement list. It's either in the folder here, but it's also on the portal.
It's in both places. I've been looking at it today.
So to approve the bond procedure, it's not um we're not bound to, if we decide to push this off a year, it's not bound to that.
Correct.
No, it's using existing impact fees where you have for the purpose, so. I'll um I mean, I'll make the motion to approve the contract with Divine Milmet and Branch Professional Association for Bond Counsel Services, and they use existing impact fees for the purpose.
We have a motion for Mr. Brunel?
I'll second that.
Second for Mr. Gannon. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All right, I'll I'll support it. Like I said, as long as we're able to decide, you know, a little further down though, if it's gonna be put on hold or it's gonna go forward this year, which we can decide that, okay? All right, all those in favors. Oh, is there any other discussion? I'm sorry.
I I when I read it, just uh I was I was uh I I found my error later, but the wire fraud warning in here, that's very a lot going on, as you know. Uh I was surprised. Um it's it's like page three. Uh like, you know, the phone call that has to happen before, because we do this at IT at work. And then I said, okay, it's a six oh three number. I'm at the top of the page and I'm looking at the phone number six oh three. I'm like, well, where's the address? And I was getting all, you know, a little crazy. Then I found it at the bottom of the page. He's got many, because I'm thinking, this just looks bad. So anyway, I'm happy with it. Cause we've had other towns get in trouble in New Hampshire with wire transfers.
This is the same bond company we used last time, right?
Yeah, it is. But I just said, why would he give me this warning and no address? I was getting going, walking down the road, and then I found the address, so.
Yeah, I I want to say I think this is the same bond company or bond legal services we use when we did the fire.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't here for that, so. Yep. So, yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. That's it. I should let you go before the road agent.
And the only other thing I have, I don't know when you're gonna do the encumbrances. I don't have the agenda.
Let's do that now.
I just have one and it's a small one, so.
Yeah, we'll do the uh encumbrances. Let me find it.
Number eight.
Number eight?
Yeah.
Oh, police car repairs.
Oh, there we go. All right. So there it is. Oh, this is all the encumbrances.
Yeah.
Okay.
So totally a hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents.
Um existing purchase orders, the encumbrances are for the twenty twenty-four, and I'll read them off so the people at home will know what we're talking about.
It's now up on the screen, dude.
What's that?
It's up on the screen.
It's up on the screen. Perfect, thank you.
So the folks at home can see it.
Yeah, okay, we have continental paving in the amount of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the twenty twenty-four paving project. We have comprehensive environmental in the amount of ten thousand nineteen dollars and nine cents expended to date one thousand.
It's the the yellow column you want to read. That's what you're encumbering, is the yellow column.
All right, my bad. Um eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-four cents for regulations. Expended to date is seventeen hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifteen cents. Okay, so we're encumbering another eighty-two hundred for that. Uh Litchfield Police Department, police car repairs, twenty-two hundred dollars. Recommission for replacement of a roof, I think, the shed roof, yep, for two thousand dollars. And then fire re- radio repairs in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for a grand total of one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents.
So small, a small correction.
Yep.
Um one, there is another encumbrance for motor oil solutions, which is twenty thousand two hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's what you had moved earlier.
Right, because that won't happen. We won't get invoiced till next year, so we're gonna encumber those dollars.
Okay.
And then essentially, on the fire radios, um we didn't have an actual quote on when we did the encumbrances on the paper.
Yep.
It's actually gonna be fifteen ninety fifteen thousand ninety-two dollars. I spoke with Mrs. Kleiner earlier today, and with Karen and Doug Nichol- Chief Nichols, they were all in agreement with the costs. And so we just need to change that fourteen five to fifteen ninety-two.
Okay, so what's our total now?
I got it. Karen, the mathematician over there, do the math. If you give me a second, I'll do it for you.
So what is that, another five hundred and ninety-two dollars on top of it?
Yeah. So it'll be one, it'll be one seventy-seven and change. So it'll be one, there'll be one seventy-seven and change.
Again, it's just, it's for the people at home who are watching.
It looks like one seventy-seven oh fifty-three point forty-two. Does that make sense?
All right, so the total, revised total is uh one hundred and seventy-seven thousand fifty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Correct?
Yeah.
You got it. So we'll amend the motion to reflect that. We need an amendment to the motion, guys.
So amended.
Motion for Mr. Brunel, thank you for not leaving me hanging. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Queens.
I'll go with that.
All right, all those in favor of the amended number, say aye.
Aye.
And now all those in favor of the revised total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand-
Sorry, I think it should have been oh sixty-three, sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents.
Amended.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Strike the last one unless we do it.
Her abacus is.
I should have used my phone, is what I should have done instead of-
Yeah, don't use computers. All those in favor of the motion for one hundred and seventy-seven thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents of encumbrances for the stated items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Don't change it again.
Just a point of clarification.
Yep.
I did vote for the encumbrances, cuz this board already approved the dollars I had in there, so.
You're covered.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief.
I think I like, I think the first one was-
Getting warm outside.
It's twenty.
It's twenty degrees.
It's two this morning.
It's twenty? Yeah.
We have family up from Georgia, they're not liking it too much.
I wouldn't think so. It was five degrees, so I drove my kid to work this morning, like, cuz this car wouldn't start, figure that one out, right? Brand new car.
All right. So I think we've done everything up to- Did it come from Georgia?
No.
Number nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
Purchase order.
Purchase, oh, purchase order with L H S Associates for the purchase of two image cast voting machines as approved in the twenty twenty-four budget for thirteen thousand dollars. Yep. Everyone remembers that was, we've already been approved and by the voters on this. I was wondering when to get to it.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order and contract with L H S Associates in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars for the purchase of two image cast voting machines.
A motion for Mr. Gannon.
A second.
Second for Mr. Lynch, any discussion? And if anyone has ever seen what goes on at Voting Day, when usually it's Mr. Brunel or Mr. Perry on the floor trying to figure out what's wrong with the machines or unstuffing them.
Jam them.
Yep, the new machines should do a much better job at not making this happen.
But we can't use them for the next, we won't have them.
We can use them in March.
Yeah, we use them in March.
Eleven in March?
Yes. Yeah, the big, the kind of the bummer was we didn't have them for the November elections.
They were told we couldn't, we could use them in March.
Biggest election we get every four years, we can do that one.
Assume we have them, I suppose, I I know they didn't wanna let it get to the federal, but.
Yeah.
I thought Terry said they'd be in. I left.
I hope so. One of them's on their last leg.
I got there for a second, I wanted. Any discussion on this, folks?
No.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Ten, what do we got here?
We've already done number ten. So number eleven, warrant article draft discussion for twenty twenty-five budget updates. So Karen, I guess you're gonna give us an update on this?
Am I?
I don't know.
So the budget remains the same, though? Yeah, well, so I think this is the, from the um Budget Committee the other day.
Yep.
Um, so the chief came and he spoke about the twenty-five thousand dollar overtime cut. So the budget still remains the same, no actions. Budget is now eight million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine, now forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-two thousand under the cap, and default is eight million one hundred and sixty dollars, I mean, one hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
You're good.
You mean eight million one hundred and sixty thousand?
What, did I say that, eight, no, I said one hundred and sixty, but then I went back to thousand. Eight million one hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Karen's not used to being up this late.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So it's about a hundred and twenty-
Past my bedtime.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars difference between the regular budget and the default budget.
Is that what it is?
Yep, it's pretty, it's pretty tight, yeah. Yeah, it's tight.
Yeah.
Again, I'll s- I'll say it again, there's not a lot of fluff in our budget, I don't think. No. No, there never has been.
And I I think the other part is is the warrants themselves, right now. I thought I heard that Kim was direct, um, Ms. Kleiner was kinda driving to the fact we could probably pay for most, all the warrants, if not all of them.
From unassigned, yeah, I think that was in the next, yeah.
She's doing the calculation.
So the unassigned fund balance for twenty twenty-four unspent funds and additional revenue for consideration?
Yeah.
Yeah. So um, you know, she's realized we offer you the following consideration. So most of it is, we we have underspends in the police department, cuz we were shorthanded. We have a a lot left in the insurance, we have it in officer wages, um, a little bit in the P D. admin, dental insurance, um, we do have some in um general government buildings and propane gas left.
Building inspectors.
The police retirement, under personnel, some of the salts in uh highway, um, wages for training? That must be, that's um police.
Police department.
Uh, no, that's fire, four two two O. is fire. And then salary for the code enforcement, um, a little bit um left from him. So Kim's suggestion, so so with that, we have approximately four hundred and ten thousand in unspent twenty twenty-four budgeted funds, of which approximately seventy-four percent is unfilled positions with the L P D. budget and the associated health and retirement savings. In revenues, we've received an excess of seventy thousand two hundred and thirteen in building permit revenue due to the large construction projects in town. In addition, we have a hundred and two thousand two hundred and four dollars and sixty-three cents in in- interest revenue due to the existing interest rates and wise investment options. We currently have seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen in revenue over budget for motor vehicle registration, some due to new residents within the town. This totals two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents in excess revenue alone. Taken into consideration the existing fund balance of three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars, eleven point two-three percent of our general operating expenses, town and school, an additional six hundred and sixty-one thousand nine twenty, nine hundred and twenty dollars and fifteen cents would bring us to three million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. We currently have three hundred and three thousand nine hundred and three dollars in warrant articles using recommended unassigned fund balance, which would leave us at three million five hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents or an estimated eleven point seven-three percent. Therefore, the board could consider using unassigned fund balance for the following. The cruiser article from taxation, and and one of those warrant articles was from unassigned in tax. The additional, and that was sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars. The additional librarian hours for two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. The supplemental fire hours for forty-seven thousand nine hundred. The health agencies of twenty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Additional total, a hundred and forty thousand twenty-eight dollars. So that would give us a new estimated unassigned fund balance of three million three hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents or an estimated eleven point two percent.
So I have a question. I i- if we're in agreement of doing this, which I think I think that cruiser definitely is a, should be done. I I have a problem, I have a small problem with what's gonna, you know, there's something here that's gonna be recurring cost, and that just kicks it down the can a little bit, right? But I also want, like, the fire department part, I would like to see it get kickstarted. This is a way to get it kickstarted. See how many hours they actually consume, how many hours they're gonna need, and maybe we can bring that number down? Or we have to go back and say, yeah, this is really the number, right? So I'm kinda okay, I I am okay with it, cuz I do know they need it. Um, my concern about the police cruiser, though, is we have two warrants, all coming from unassigned. If they're both voted voted down, no.
No, one's unassigned, one's taxing.
No, I know, but they're, I, they're both, they're two separate warrants today.
Yes, correct.
Coming from unassigned, undes- undes- unassigned, sorry. If they're voted down, we can't do anything again. This is what happened last year, we 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 went down in a warrant, and even though we have an emergency, we could not use, even though we had this underspend that we could have used to buy the cars this year, no means no. Would it be more appropriate to take that warrant article, spin it into one article to start a capital vehicle replacement fund? If it approves, we can use that to buy the cars. Um, it does delay it, cuz if it doesn't prove, we don't have the money. But again, if we have an underspend, we can potentially get the money. We couldn't even get, we couldn't even make a decision as a board to go, still, we're gonna replace a car, because we couldn't touch the money, cuz it was twenty twenty-four money. I just wonder if that's a better path forward, I would defer to to Ms. Kleiner and everybody else. And I know it's kinda late in the game, too, but I think having two warrants, they may go, well, one's enough, not two, you know, that kinda thing. And I, we do need three this year, we have to, gotta fix this problem. So I'm in favor of her recommendations. I just question whether the Budget Committee will not like the fact we're kicking the can down. I I just think we need to kick the can down in this case. That's my take. I think we should go with the recommendations, but.
I would hate for it to fail, and then we have to wait another year.
Right, that's why I'm afraid of having to two of them separately like that.
That's a concern also.
Yeah, and then they both fail, this one fails, but, or if we put, if we put the cars, and we steadily say it's for cruises, and we put them together, they both fail, we still have the same problem.
Right.
I feel like people will understand that we're trying to create a capital reserve to be able to deal with this stuff in the long term. And I'm not trying to be degenerate, I'm just saying that at least if it fails, we still have the money this, in this coming twenty twenty-five budget. If we can find the cash to buy the car, we could buy a car. This year, we were pretty much hand tied, we couldn't do anything, knowing we were running, we're running short, or running with a, with additional funding, or have more funding than we needed because of people leaving and stuff like that. Uh, we couldn't even buy the car, cuz no means no. So, I mean, I know, I I think, I believe Kim's back tomorrow.
Yes.
And maybe she can weigh in on it then, but we do have a little bit of time to reiterate before we go back to the Budget Committee again.
We have one more time out with budgets?
We have the ninth, right? Again, at the end of the day, I mean, I know we have, we have an unis- we have um we have remaining dollars left in this year's budget, and this is the way to give back the money to the taxpayers, because we're we're taking costs out of twenty twenty-five. There's no sense of re-raising it again, to have it drop to the unassigned, do an offset in October, we can do it immediately and get what the town needs um to maintain the services, the the vote is already approved. The vote has already approved the cars we have, the vote has already approved the offices we have, all the stuff. We need to kinda maintain that. I did, you know. It's a good use, it's 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 a, it's a perfect use for what is there.
They're not gonna get cheaper?
No, in in the car, the car repair, the car, I don't, I mean, you drive by Edwards, the cars are always there. There's some car there all the time. I had to go fix them, I had to go find it, it was actually at Edwards.
There's three on the SIP for next year, three cruises, right?
Yeah, and this is the three, the target, right? It's one in the operating budget and these two to get them, get in there, and we have the money, and and again, why let it drop to the unassigned, which we can't do anything with other than taking some money in October and and, you know, buy into the offset? The same thing results, but why raise it again? Right, why go back and tap my pocket, but get in everyone else's pocket, but when the money's already in the bank? Let's put the money to use to where we're gonna, taking the cost out of twenty twenty-five, and we're not, in the cases of cruises, it makes perfect sense, we're not kicking the tire, right? We we got now one, if we, the budget's, so we got one in the budget going forward, and we're now be able to do the the one, two, one, two, whatever the program was gonna be. Whatever the chief decides, I'm not sure where he's following on at this point, but.
Are you saying remove the one warrant article that says we pay for it out of here, or you're just saying, leave them both on and still buy one?
I I think they should be both be unassigned, I think that's fine, I just, my concern is, should we have two warrants saying unassigned, and people gonna read it and understand what we're doing? And not say, well, you already got one, why you need another one?
Yeah.
Or we take them, take it and re-craft the warrant altogether and just start, create the revolving fund to fund these car repair replacements over time, using that money? And know, immediately, we're gonna draw right out of it, I get that part of it, but the fund now is established, and we can put money in there every year based on action of the voters.
We have a lot of revolving funds every year? I know we know at least two, right?
Well, there are some Budget Committee members-
People keep saying it's always gonna be funded, right? It's not gonna end.
Yeah, I mean, there's some Budget Committee members that believe revolving funds is the way to do it, and not keep on, try to level set. And I I agree, if we can somehow find ways to fund it, it makes sense.
What if the cruiser does not pass, but the warrant, the trust fund passes? There's no mean no?
No, you mean the cruiser in the budget?
No, the cruiser on the wa- if you do one by the warrant article and one for the trust fund.
Both gone and just have a trust fund?
Oh, both gone? Okay.
I would leave the one with the zero tax impact in there.
And then maybe put the other one in the, except that one is the trust fund? Okay, good. That gives us, gives us, that gives it, that gives us fifty-fifty, right? And I think if we make sure we educate correctly, they'll understand why we're doing it.
I will say, I was, I was actually surprised the other night when when this all came forward, cuz I hadn't seen anything of it before the budget hearing, so. Um, when I was gathering all that information and trying to store it in my brain, I was, I don't, I don't know, being a cynic like I am, I almost felt like it was the same thing as last year, where we had everything kind of in place, and then there was a switch up in the, in the warrant articles, you know, to the funding and things like that, so. I was a little, I was, I was a little thrown back, and I was a little well, angry, but I used a different term to a gentleman in the parking lot after.
Well, I I don't, I guess, but honestly, why you would be, at the end of the day, we're trying to-
I'm the rep to the Budget Committee, I should know these things before they go in.
I heard, I watched the meeting and heard.
Even an email or a text message or anything would have been nice to know, rather than we sit down to open the meeting and the town administrator says, we might be able to get rid of all the warrant articles.
I can see that part, okay.
You know, because we have all this extra money. I mean, I I knew nothing of that, I was, I was, I honestly, I was, I was, I was a little upset by it.
Hard to be aligned with, you know, in the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is tough, and I get that, I I think, I it, I don't know the particular timelines, I'm, what I'm thinking is happening is that the latest information came in very late on the day Thursday, when she's putting this all together, and she's trying to give you the latest and break in, cuz there's not a lot of time between that meeting and the next meeting to make sure people are aware. Um, I think, I think she's done, I think she's done a good job to help between with Karen and all the department heads.
She communicated, that's the key part.
Yeah, I mean, I get, I don't know, I would assume that.
I don't question whether she's done a good job, I I don't, I don't, I really don't, I think she's done a good job, I think Karen's done a fantastic job. But I just think, I, it would have been nice if I had known this before I went into the budget meeting. Because they were eyeballs on me when this was being talked about.
Yeah.
Made it look like you didn't do your homework.
Well, the revenue, the revenue part is tough, the the revenue piece, which continues to grow, that's always a, always a break in thing, it's always changing, and it's month by month, and we're in that last month where a lot of it starts to come in. I think, I know from a department head perspective, I know she reached out to all the departments, and she didn't get any, all the feedbacks for the encumbrances until late day Friday, and some were still coming in Monday and Tuesday. So I think she was waiting for everybody to come and say, okay, we're all good, this is what we got left.
How about there may, how about there may be some changes? Something, you know, right? Give me, give me something, so I'm not, I'm not swimming with lead anchors, you know, but I mean.
So we don't meet until January thirteenth?
Yeah, that's our next meeting.
And then, but you needed the knife, which means we'd have to decide tonight.
Well, I think she's looking for us to decide based on the financial guidance today. We have to, right, let's wanna meet on the-
And then breaking this down? The librarian and the supplemental fire, they have to go to warrant articles, they're expanded services. I've been very clear on that for years. I, the health agencies, I believe we funded them out of unassigned fund before, so that doesn't bother me so much?
Well, she's not recommending it on sign this time, oh, no.
Yeah, I think all of them, yeah.
Oh, she did, okay.
I I agree with you, Bob, with the lever and the fire station, that definitely.
But I I know, she wasn't, well, hang on a second, she's not saying it's not gonna go to warrant.
Yeah.
She's saying go to warrant, but she's gonna fund it.
I know, but it's a recurring cost down the road, and it will be tax impact next year.
Can we on the warrant put the reoccurring costs of the budget, so they, and then- Can we on the warrant put the reoccurring costs of the budget, so they understand with it? We're paying for it in twenty twenty five. But in twenty twenty six is what the cost is going forward.
You could probably do that in the voter guide, but again, I'm I'm not in favor of that, because you're asking the taxpayers to fund something. Without, I mean, you're telling them there's no cost, but down the road, there is cost.
And I started this by saying I hang up was there, cause I realized that.
Yeah.
I I think it's a, it's a need that we have to have, I, I mean, just today alone, they were out of town.
Yeah.
Most of the day due to a fire in Monedary.
I don't, I don't, I don't argue the need. I absolutely do not argue the need. But the.
Interpretation is, it's.
Yeah.
It's not, it's.
I know there'll be people in the budget committee that will not support it.
Well, he just won specifically.
Because we, some of us have been very clear about that expansion. We vote against school budgets because of positions in.
This is not a position, it's just additional funding. Funding mechanism.
Fire is, it is, cause you're adding, you're adding help.
You're adding hours, yes.
Yeah, so you're adding hours, same thing with the librarian, yeah.
I mean, you could argue this is the same argument, if they had to add more hours to the call department for the call, for call time, cause the call, call mounts are going up. Their numbers will keep on climbing, so they.
You always have to put it to the taxpayers, in my opinion. I can get voted down for one.
Well, let me ask you a question, I do that, let's just, let's just say this, let's use this as an argue, as a double advocate. They asked for additional fifty thousand dollars because they're running in the red every year, because of the call volume. The voters voted down. They are not not gonna respond, they have to respond, and by the way, we're gonna still pay. So at the end of the day, we're gonna pay.
Yep.
So, it makes no sense to have that argument, but the voters will say, I I think the voters will approve it, I agree, that's why I'm not sure it's a risk. But I'm just, let's, it's not people, it's hours. There's no dedicated person, there's no dedicated time, it's. We need extra help on these certain times, this time of year, during these type of events, this helps fund that. I'm not, I I don't have an objection to doing, bringing it to vote if you don't wanna put down a sign.
Yeah, I couldn't support it if it wasn't, if it wasn't its own warrant. On those two, and I'll support them, I do support them.
How, what, you said, you said two, though, you're talking about.
The library added hours in the, in the, in the fire.
But you want it to say, because the way.
You want to have tax impact.
It's not gonna say tax rate impact, it's gonna be zero.
Yeah.
And people can interpret that, it was okay.
I mean, it doesn't cost me anything.
But in reality, uh, cause I do, we definitely, I agree, one hundred percent, we need to support the, the fire department, but I don't wanna look to see. On how we're doing it, I wanted to know. And we can't say this year, there's no cost, or next year, there's no cost, or the year after.
Would, would the board? I mean, I guess the other question would be, is this, can we just say that we're gonna commit additional fifty thousand dollars to offset taxes in October, above and beyond what we typically do? To offset this cost going forward, or at least help going forward?
I'd rather keep it clean.
But I'm not saying, that's, that's us saying we're gonna do this, it's hard to, we have one time a year, we can use our unassigned to do additional helping, right? The taxpayers, but. Okay. So, we're in agreement with everything except for those two, like, those two.
And I actually like your idea of starting an expendable trust fund for the police cruises, I think, I think that's a, I think that's a good idea. I wouldn't have a problem with that one.
I just, yeah, I think the, either we combine it to be one, and we just, it's on, you know, and they they voted, but I'm afraid of the full down, right, cause that's a problem. I think taking one of them, just converted it to a revolving fund and put that dollar in there, and if it passes, we at least have access to the money. Cause who knows how many cars we'll be able to get off the first anyway.
What if the other car doesn't pass?
We still have the money.
The one with zero tax impact?
But is no means no, can you now not take that?
It's two separate topics, it's revolving and maintenance, what, maintenance, maintenance replacement.
Well, there's one in the budget, so if the budget passes, they'll have one.
Yes.
And then the other ones, I've never seen an unassigned fund balance one not pass.
I haven't either, but that assumes both parties say they approve.
Agree.
Agree with it. Right, we don't know where it's gonna go, but. That's a good point, I don't know, that's. Cause the, because the one is, one is a specifically a cruiser, the other one is a revolving fund for equipment, for equipment replacement. Doesn't say what it's for.
No, but you're then using it to buy a cruiser, that they already said no to. Is my thinking of it.
You could be right.
Equipment replacement, a car is a.
Couldn't take it out of unassigned. I mean, it's a leftovers this year, right, because it said no.
We clearly can't put them together, cause we can't have both go down.
You're saying the same thing, but twice, you know what I'm saying? I understand what you're saying.
I don't know what you just said.
See, the taxpayers may, but we do, but your conflict is the no means no.
Yeah, yeah.
And I always.
We're in agreement at the unassigned, because it is a one-time expense, cause we're gonna go, this is the high, high part of the year, because we're trying to do three cars. One in the operating budget where it needs to be, where it's supposed to be, and then try to get the two cars at least preactively, proactively fixed.
If the three cars actually did pass, then we could stop just buying one a year, which is already in the budget.
Used to do that.
And that will.
Right, we're consistent, right. And the only, the only issue with that is when the admin cars are gonna be replaced, that could be ten years on the road, who knows, but that's still, that's.
We had that program before one time. For that, or year-end monies, but.
Yeah.
We used to replace them once, one car a year. I don't like the two, one, two, cause I think that's too confusing for the taxpayers, but I think one a year, the people will buy into.
So, I will, I will make a motion that we approve the town administrator's recommendations. With the exception of the Article sixteen funding and Article seventeen.
We're ignoring this whole thing, right? All of those five? Are we ignoring five, or just the ones that needed labor?
The librarian and the supplemental fire.
Okay, so that's those two?
Yeah, so it would be the health agencies.
That's what it was, but.
And the cruiser.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you, and, okay.
That'll be the motion.
And you wanna do those from unassigned? But I would keep them separate articles, so, just in case.
I will second that motion.
Well, I think it's got modified a little bit, so, I, my, my point was, yeah, approve everything that's in the, in the list, except for Article sixteen and seventeen. That would stay tax impact. And we agree that's what we're saying.
Which is the librarian and the supplemental fire, okay. Okay, but the two cruises, keep them, keep them as their own, instead of the one with.
Well, I was gonna, once we get that, yeah, no, I was gonna.
Both be on the signed fund, but separate articles.
That's how it will be currently, but I do wanna make a discussion after we approve this.
Okay.
So, I have a question, if we approve this, we have one article already for unassigned balance.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is this one here?
It will be a second one.
So, we're gonna have two warrant articles?
From unassigned, yes.
All right, and then we'll have the health agencies, which I thought we already had one on there.
But it will now go to unassigned instead of.
Unassigned instead of raising the revenue, okay, gotcha.
Done that in the past.
I don't think, I don't think so. This is the first year we're doing.
All right, so we have now, at this moment, we have three for the cars, right?
We always do health agencies, but with a tax impact, taxation, or fund.
The theory behind that was the voters had the right to say yea or nay, you know, and that's, so they wanted, they wanted people to understand what they, they've been doing it. And spending, passing for years, it makes sense, we have the money, not the tax for it. I think that's what the theory is.
So, we have a motion for Mr. Brunel.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a second from the screening, does everybody understand that? Any questions, this question? Bob, you also with it?
Yep, yeah, cause the other two, the two that have tax impact are going to stay.
I see where you're coming from, no.
As a warrant article, it's the additional services. Yes, I'm good with that. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries five zero zero. What's, what's your other point?
So, just go back to the two police cruiser warrants, just for consideration. Can, should we ask Ms. Kleiner to take a look at how we should move forward? Meaning, should we combine them? I don't think we should do. Should we take one and convert it to a revolving fund? And leave one standing as a cruiser, or we just go with the two and?
We're catching up, we're catching up, right? We haven't been doing the replacements.
And no, and I.
Catch up, just do what's happening.
And like, like I said, if, 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 if the three of them do pass, and we have one in the budget, that means we're gonna have the money for one going forward.
Correct, just two.
My only fear about that, Bob, is that they're gonna come back, we did this before, we had two in one, two in one, they wanted us to go evolve, we kept resisting doing it, the budget committee. Several, several members are very vocal about have these funds to flatten out the tax. So, and I, I, I mean, I disagree, I think this should have been in the operating budget all along, I think it should be more than one car in the operating budget all along, but. Um, whatever, is what it is. I just, I still worry about the two articles being confusing. I already voted for that, why am I filling that out? I don't have to fill it in, again, it's already been voted on. But, you know, and I'm just saying, if, you know, is there a way to protect that funding to put it into, into the revolving fund?
So, at this point, what we have for warrant articles are two from unassigned.
Yeah.
And then the one that we have today, but we might change it, would be one to be taxed, right, to tax them for. I know we want unassigned, we wanna have a fund. What's, what's the one that's there now?
It's.
We have one in the budget.
So, we have one in the budget, and then for warrant articles, we had one from taxation and one from unassigned.
Which we just voted.
Now, we have two unassigned, one taxation. That's where we are at the moment? Oh, you removed that one, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so now we just have two unassigned and one still in the budget.
Okay, now, what, did we have a revolving fund one set up? We had talked about that.
That's why I'm saying, we keep on talking about this.
It's a, a trust fund, an expendable trust fund.
But that's something you have to renew every year.
You have to add to it.
You have to, you can add to it, but you have to establish it first, so the motion is to establish it, fund it, establish it and fund it, and then it's there. Or after, then you can put money back into it as you need to.
Right, okay.
But, a-again, I'm, my only ask here is, do we ask Ms. Kleiner for the technical assessment, whether we should do it or not?
I think we should ask, though.
Cause I, again, I.
I wouldn't want them together, cause I wouldn't want the people to say no and have them both.
Right, I don't want them together neither, I totally agree with that, totally agree with that. I'm just saying, do we change the purpose of one of the articles to start the revolving fund, fund it? Now, to your point, if, if the, the one in the, the warrant article fails, that says buy the car, and it fails. And now, but the, but the revolving fund is successful, can we expend now the revolving fund? I don't know the answer, right?
End of game.
Right, so my question is, I think that's part of the question from Ms. Kleiner is, if we do this, and one fails, the, the one says, clearly says it, and it's here. Can we still expend the dollars to buy the cruiser, cause that's what its purpose was? Or, you know, I, again, I I also fear that both will fail, because they don't understand why we're asking for two, and. Again, we have to do a really good job pitching this to the voters.
I don't think they've failed, I really don't think.
Well, it's unassigned, so.
By Edwards, and they see the cruises there all the time.
It's a speed, it's a speed, it's a.
It's a speed trap.
Not a speed trap, but it's, it helps traffic control.
A turret.
A turret, right. I don't know how many times I've gone by there, when I stopped, took my brakes, going, crap, this is parked there.
You have a dependency.
Yeah, but he parks it out next to the road.
And he does it on purpose, I'm sure.
I saw two or three. You can have a dependency on the warrant articles, if the first one passes. Great.
Yep.
If the second one does not, then you could have the unfunded one saying, if this one failed, then you could use the money. We've done that before.
I think that gets confusing.
It does get confusing, but it's trying, I'm trying to get you out of that problem.
Somebody's gonna look at it and say, why am I doing this?
Listen, I, I'm fine with it going the way it is, I just think we should ask Ms. Kleiner to take a look at it, if there's another way to advise us, but. But we, again, we have a small window of time for the next budget meeting to clean, clean this up and communicate it beforehand, beforehand, so we know this coming.
Well, really, we don't meet before the next budget committee meeting.
We don't, that's why, I, I mean, I, I will defer to you, Bob, being the rep and with Ms. Kleiner, going forward with it, I guess.
How's that sound, Bob?
Cause you're not really changing our direction, we still want two cars, it's just how do we get there the right way without risking it?
We need the two cars, that we want, we need them.
Yeah. I get what you're saying, yeah.
Cause I know we had it, we, we had a time limit on it before. You know, they had, we, we changed them out, cause the costs or repairs were ridiculous.
It should be, every, to be honest, most departments, every three and a half, three years, three to four years, they're being rotated out.
You got it.
Yeah, and we start, we tried to do that ten years ago, and we failed trying to get it started, so.
I mean, if we're not gonna give the extra money back to the taxpayers, we might as well buy some equipment with it.
Well, again, you are giving money back to the taxpayers, because the taxpayers already authorize us to have these vehicles. The fact remains, we have not been maintaining them, to use an analogy. We're allowing our assets to fail, as in other organizations have, and now we're trying to do catch up, and it's costing us more and more and more every year. We gotta fix this.
The maintenance is important.
We've gotta do the maintenance.
I'll stay for it.
I mean, I, I don't have to raise any points, but has anyone seen this building, the exterior? Have we seen the exterior of this building? That's another problem coming up. We got, we got, most of our siding's falling apart, rain is getting behind the walls. You know, when are we gonna solve problems here, because we're not maintaining this building neither?
We used to maintain it, what happened?
I don't know.
This guy.
You may not be giving money back to the taxpayers by buying a cruiser, but you're not taxing them next year for a cruiser either.
Right, yeah, we're not going, here's the ten dollars I borrowed you, borrowed from you last year, I now need twenty, so it's.
I think the image of that would be wonderful to the taxpayers, just saying. Even if it's a dollar, you're at least showing them that you care.
I, I get it, but there's no mechanism for us to actually give it back, that's the challenge. I, I, I love. I mean, I, I, cause I thought the same thing, I'm gonna get a check back? No. It's like we give back impact fees. I didn't, as a, as a person who bought a house in this town twenty five years ago, I never got a dime back. And the company built my houses out of business, I don't know where the money went, right? I paid them, ultimately, the price of the house. So.
It's a rock, too.
All right.
Okay, so.
Next. We go next, we're.
Top up. So, we, we voted to use the money for the, those articles, so that's good, so we're good there. And I think that takes care of that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing else we have to vote on that one, right?
I, I think the only other thing, but with regards to warrant articles, is going to be, uh, Ms. Kleiner's memo to the budget committee. And then also, basically, I'll land the, the bond council, the bond process we filed last year, five years ago. And that, that's there for your reference, I think, I think was shared with the budget committee, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, the bond reference, yeah.
Yeah. And I think the, the public hearing for the bond, right now, I believe it's January fourteenth, is what she was looking for. Although I did raise the question, could we not do it on the sixteenth? Prior to, like we've done in the past, prior to the budget hearing, only because that's two days, we got a staff for LCTV set up, tear down. All that, with a bond hearing, the, the budget hearing usually is fairly quick. And the bond hearing is reasonably, hasn't been. You know? I don't know if there's been a decision there yet, or is, or she's even communicated that yet, but I did ask her that, that was a, that was an option.
That was a nice document to read about the history.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how the price came down. Maybe Ron is going to show up at that meeting.
Something came down, what are we talking about?
Uh, down, right above. The budget.
You should have one, one of your.
Okay.
Things should be on the, the whole process.
Yeah, I think the one thing, it's like, two thousand seventeen's when we asked for the engineering fees, that's when that was done. Two thousand eighteen was when we came forward with the bond. That's when we got public feedback on the costs. We got questioned on the drawings and the sizes, all that stuff, and we went back. A group of us all went back and kinda whittled it back and got it to a much more reasonable cost. And it was presented at that lower cost in Warren. But I will say, also, because of the bond hearing and then the vote, there was a lot of public outreach that happened between that window of time. Because the price was changing, and the design changed a little bit to kinda accommodate the, the lower cost scope.
That is true. Anything else on the warrants or any of that, guys? Hearing none, we will go to the, well, town administrator report.
All right, thank you. So, January's newsletter will feature the proposed new police station. Twenty twenty five town hall hours notice has been published on website, Facebook, to board, staff and transfer station sign. Uh, Penachuk East Utility Inc., Pittsfield Aqueduct Company and Penachuk Water Works Incorporated collectively, the joint petition is. January second, twenty twenty five status conference is canceled. And then the twenty twenty five board and commission meetings with the board of selectmen schedule is below.
There it is, hello.
And then Terry had given me, um, the tax collectors, what they've collected since the, the bills were due on Friday, December twentieth. And, um, so our second, um, committed for. And, um, so our second, um, committed for our second issue property tax bill was twelve million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. And the balance of uncollected is only three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three fifty-six point two three. So that's pretty good.
That is very good.
And I think just to clarify the new town hall hours.
Yeah.
Starting January second, the town hall will be open for business, Monday, seven thirty to six P M. Tuesday through Thursday, seven thirty to four P M, and then on Friday, it'll be seven thirty to twelve P M. So the town hall will be closed in the afternoon. The police station will remain open unchanged, they're here, it's from seven typically to eleven o'clock, uh, depending on dispatcher coverage.
That's it.
That it?
I think that's it.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
All right, up next, we have selectmen reports, uh, first, rec commission, Mr. Cannon, you're also heritage and.
Actually, I'll be.
No, Kevin's heritage now.
No, Kevin's rec.
I'm rec. Hey, Matt, we talked about here.
I should throw this away, too.
Well, that's because it's written the old way.
Steve, go first, what committee you want, what do you got?
Planning board, uh, four topics were discussed, Litchfield capital improvement, as Mike discussed here tonight. Um, stormwater management and erosion control. Uh, and then the heritage commission came and presented the historic district ordinance. Uh, there was a lot of discussion, I think it still needs a lot of work, and personally, I don't think it'll be ready in time for the warrant articles this year. There was definitely a lot of questions and topics and discussions from the board as well as people in the audience. And then the northern commercial district work session was held, Mr. Chabano and his team were present and discussed. MUVD, which is multi-use village district, which would open up the area for small business and some condos. Uh, businesses such as nail salons, barber shops, maybe a small restaurant, but nothing over ten thousand square feet. Heritage, uh, was a very quick meeting, lasted ten minutes, it was wonderful, and it was just basically a quick discussion on proposed, uh, the historic district.
Question for you, Steve, I watched the public hearing or the, the heritage commission coming to the planning board. I got the sense that they thought, the, the planning board's the only one that can bring that to warrant.
If they're making a zoning ordinance, yeah.
And I didn't really sense the planning board was in agreement with it. But they, they didn't really take, I don't think they took a vote or anything in support or deny, but I would assume at this point it's too late.
It's, yeah, that's why I said it's not gonna, so, I want our legal team to review it first, and of course they have to, Kim was there, Kim agreed that.
Yeah, I would have thought they've already done it, but I guess not.
Some of the discussion on the board was, they don't like the idea of basically it being a blanket of four point seven miles. Uh, which comes out to be like ten miles on either side of the highway. And then you're not, you have no influence, you, if your property is in it. Bob's, Kevin's, you're just notified that you're in it, so what we asked is can something be sent to the people that are gonna be impacted? So that they're at least aware, so they can attend the hearing, so that they can have some input, input on what's going on.
Did I hear that there's a, there's a statutory requirement for a hundred, hundred owners or less would get physically notified over that, they would, they have to go hear about it through?
Yeah, under a hundred, they get notified, anything over a hundred, they don't, and I think there's like a hundred and thirteen properties.
And that, that's obviously a cost to do that because it's based on U S billing, right?
But I personally believe that I would not agree as a property owner that all of a sudden my house falls into a historic district, even though it's not a historical house. Without me having any, any say in the matter. And if they're not notified, they're not gonna know to go to the deliberative or even how to vote when it comes out if they don't understand what it is.
I, I thought it was a good question, I, I, I guess I'm surprised that they wouldn't reach out to the owners directly as they were developing it, to see if there was support for it. I know, I think, I think several probably have homes in that district, I don't know where everybody lives in that area, but.
Yeah, actually, all of them would.
All of them do.
But, all but me.
Oh, okay, yeah, I wouldn't know that.
And Cory.
Yeah, it just seems odd, I mean, I, I guess going to the owners of the current, the current owners would make sense, are you in support of, right?
Or if it was a home over a certain age. You know, like Terry Brand's house is impacted, but her house is relatively new compared to Bob's or.
Yeah, your house is impacted, your house isn't that.
Steve Powell's.
Yeah.
But the way it's written and the way we work, it would be from Pedro to Robin and everything on both sides of C B H.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, it just felt like it wasn't.
Yeah, my home is subject to that.
What's that?
My home is, is subject to that.
Yeah.
Both of them.
How do you feel about that, then?
I have reservations, it all depends on what they are going to be requiring, because if we have to fix up the other house, we gotta go through a process. Keep it, but I want to change that. That's when it gets a little gray, and I've been involved with historical stuff.
It also seemed like there was confusion around enforcement and, because I like who really the enforcing, it was, I would assume it's, it's a code.
Code enforcement, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah.
I've, I've dealt with that in towns that I've worked in, it can be tricky.
Yeah, like I said, I, I don't know if I'm forward or against it. I guess I'm not directly impacted, so.
Oh, yes, I'm.
I think it should be up to the landowners to.
That's what I'm thinking, too, I mean. Yeah.
There's pros and there's cons.
Yeah, well, there's, there's consequences too, right, when you do something like that, too.
Did they come up with a zoning ordinance, they have something?
They have something.
Okay.
But as far as I know, it, the planning board, they accepted, so they're, I mean, they're gonna run out of time before.
They won't be ready for this year's warrant articles, I don't believe.
All right, thanks.
It's a good time to discuss.
I did not see that meeting.
I guess it all, to me, it would all depend on how much infringement on the property owner's rights.
That's, that's, that's the key part there, right, right here. No doubt.
If it's just meant, like I had heard, along the line, and it was, like, if you're gonna demolish an old building, you have to go through the process. But I mean, if you want to change the windows in your house or get a new roof or something.
I understand that, too.
But as a homeowner, be an impact, if you don't know enough about how it's going to impact you, so how would you, would you want to be informed?
Have a good night, Mr. Robles, Merry Christmas, nice to see you.
I agree, I, I do agree, yeah. Okay.
That's what I had for heritage and planning.
Okay, up next, we'll go with.
I can do direct.
Capital improvements.
So tonight.
Economic, N R P C.
All right. No, that's just those three now, uh, capital improvement, uh, was just delivered today. Uh, we usually don't start meeting in the past until after warrant articles in April, however, we are in the calendar for January sixth, so. I'm not sure we're gonna go to that. But right now, it's scheduled. Uh, because, again, you need department heads and, you know, all of that, um, so I'm, I'm thinking it's really gonna be April twenty twenty-five. Um, economic development committee, we will start our meetings up in January, end of January. N R P C, we're in, again, the second wave of grant applications, um, the pinecrest sidewalk is in that. And we're gonna start, uh, going through the process selection on that. And that's all I have.
That's it. All right, up next, rec.
We had the meeting and this is what it was, you talked about it already.
Very good.
About the, uh, Bob, as you used to recall, how many times we dived off those boards there, over the years.
There?
There.
It was a great dock system that was in that water.
Oh, yeah.
They also used to chlorinate it every year, twice.
Yeah.
Once before the summer camp and once after. A lot of it was crystal clear and it didn't show the fish.
Nope.
Wonder why it was twenty-five feet, you could see the bottom, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, you could see some of the swimming over there. You could also stand up at the middle, there was a spot in the middle you could stand up. We used to swim across the old ground. But it was, it was always a great pond, it'd be nice to bring it back.
It was, it was crystal clear.
Yeah.
But what is it now, is it just tall?
What it is, it's vegetation's not, it's not being used, but it was used by the, the camp, and they're all out there with boats and stuff.
They used to clean the vegetation out.
Yeah, they did the work on it, but they owned it.
Yeah. All right, up next, Mr. Brunel.
Nothing to report, there's been no meeting since our last meeting. It's been a late month.
Something to do with December. So, uh, budget committee, as everyone knows, will meet on the ninth, start voting on the warrant articles. School facilities, I did not make last week's meeting because I had a company Christmas party, so I went to that. Didn't take in the light show at Mills, if anybody has not gone, you've got a couple more nights.
I've been there.
Strongly recommend to go see it.
It's open to January twelfth, I think.
Absolutely astounding.
It was, it was great.
I've gone to the LaBelle ones the last few years.
I have too, yeah.
This blows it away.
Really? It's nice to hear.
Yeah, it is.
They worked hard on that, good.
Having several members that work, several family members that work there. Uh, the crowds have been way off the charts, they never expected what they had from it, so it's been a great turnout, it's a great recognition for Litchfield. Because it's been all over W M R, it's all over local stations, it's everywhere.
And they run it well, and they do run it well.
And it's, it's not, uh, it's just a nice walk. Okay, you got, you got your little places you can get snack and you got your warming pits.
In, in a proud, grumpy moment, or grandfather moment, my granddaughter, my youngest granddaughter is in the commercials.
Oh, really?
That is her, the, the, yeah, that's my granddaughter, and my grandson's also in the commercials, too.
That's awesome.
Yeah, every time I open Facebook, I see it, I go, oh, God. I want some, I want some rewards back.
There is some going on about, um, traffic, as to be expected.
Yeah, yeah.
Honestly, I think it's been less than one spooky world.
It's not been as bad.
Yeah, I think they, I know they initially had some parking issues because, I mean, they obviously did not expect the onslaught.
It was a large crowd.
Yeah, and they've had of, they had to reutilize some of their other parking areas, too, and they had a comment, they said to bring other, because they had to, they had to meet all the spooky world requirements, too, right, so they had to get the lighting stuff out there, so. Uh, you know, again.
They took the fence down, I've had somebody come in already and they're parking out there in the field, this is just because of the people, because it went on T V and everybody's showing up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and they're not, they're not against what's happening, but they, they weren't expecting the growth to be.
No, and, and I don't think they did, I don't think they did either, and.
I know, sure, I'm talking to the boys when I got there, the Grinch, one of, one of the owners.
Yeah, there you go. Cool.
Oh, yeah, he was dressed as a Grinch.
Well, it's good to see it.
Yep, it is, for the time.
Yep.
Cool.
Anything else anyone has?
Nothing.
All right.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay?
And to everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Oh, I want to say also, the building department is way over my head right now, nothing's going on.
Good, well, we do have a couple applicants from what I was told.
I know of one.
So, uh, so hearing none, we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Brunel.
Second.
Second for Ms. Queen, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero zero. Everyone have a wonderful Christmas and a great New Year, stay safe and stay warm. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Matt.
Thank you for everything you do.